All right, we're gonna call this name of order at two oh three. Roll call city clerk.
Vice Mayor Shell.
Present.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
Present.
Mayor Barion.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Watts is absent.
At this point, we have Commission Business, item one, City Commission Review for Special Revenue Funds, Operating Budget Expenditures and Capital Improvement Program. Starting with a stormwater.
Okay, um, I do not know what the normal form means, but I guess we have our staff come up and go through the motions of each one of the items. So, I know Jennifer's back there, the facts might need to be back up over here. So she can kind of walk me through, you know, the different people and then Rock Island is here, so he can leave it out for that.
You ready, Rob?
I'm ready.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay. And now we're gonna do a little stormwater. At this time, now, as quick. Do we wanna go line item to line item or yell something, just like on the dry down?
No.
We don't, we don't do that, I don't like that. Yeah, just go ahead and present as, as is.
So I have a little key item, um, that are gonna be different from last year. So, we'll start with, um, the special revenue. There's gonna be two hundred and, uh, two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and one assessment revenue.
What, what would be helpful, um, is if you can, uh, reference on me, if, if what we have is what you have, what page number you're on.
Well, I, I just have to read the stuff, it's on page one.
Okay.
And it's gonna be the first line item.
Got it, thank you.
And it'd be, um, go over the column. The, the columns start with twenty-three, twenty-four activities. And then it goes to twenty-four, twenty-five approved budget. And then activities through nine thirty. Um, that's, and then we have the projected, what's remaining for the rest of fiscal year. And then we have twenty-five, twenty-six projected.
Got it, thank you.
And Miss Brianna, help me with these key notes, so Brianna, you can chime in if you need to.
Yes, ma'am, you just let me know if you wanna go over the key items that's fine, or I can do them however you wanna do it, it's good with me.
So can you go over the key items for stormwater and then I'll go from there?
Yes, so let me pull that up for you. So, your stormwater, um, what's important to remember about stormwater is that this fund is restricted, meaning that all of the money that you bring in in your restricted stormwater fund can only be used for stormwater. Um, you have a special assessment that you bring in for stormwater and that money is solely for the purpose of, you know, the furtherance of those initiatives in stormwater, so your, uh, assessment is expected to bring in about two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred, which is a little bit less than your full assessment role, and the reason that is, is because there is a ninety-five percent conservatory rule, um, that we should be following, and so we have budgeted ninety-five percent of the assessment role, as all of the assessment, uh, may not be collected, um, in one year. So, with that said, that is what is budgeted at this time, and that is based on your resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventy. In addition to this revenue, there is also a street skate, uh, grant that is partially in the stormwater budget. This grant is actually split between a couple of different budgets, because there are multiple departments that have tasks that are set to be done within the street skate grant. And so we wanna keep those stormwater tasks, um, in the stormwater fund. So with that said, you have eight hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars allocated to the stormwater fund, and that is going to come in, uh, via grant revenue through CDBG. In addition to that, there's a couple of other, uh, smaller revenues. You have some interest earned on investments of about forty-three hundred dollars, bad debt recovery of two hundred dollars. And we're expecting to bring forward forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from reserves, meaning we're asking for the commission to approve that we borrow that money from reserves in the stormwater fund to fund, uh, some capital in your current year budget. Uh, it's gonna be used about forty-six thousand dollars for some capital equipment and some system repairs and maintenance, which we'll speak about here shortly. And the minimal balance of that, uh, would be used to fund some cost increases within the department. Do we have any questions on revenues so far?
Yeah, so you spoke to, you say in a few, we're going to see what the, the ask for the forty-eight, four fifty is gonna be going towards?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. So we can actually skip down to that and then skip back up. Um, so, in the budget, there for your capital, you have, uh, twenty thousand in, um, your capital improvements line, uh, and eight hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars in your, um, stormwater fund tasks themselves for your CDBG grant that we spoke about a minute ago. Um, and I actually need to grab my note on your, um, your items for your forty-eight thousand. So, within that, you've got a six thousand dollar request for equipment repairs and maintenance that covers some bird repairs for a bush hog mower, um, a street sweeper and a trailer. In addition to that, there was twenty thousand dollars in system maintenance requested for, um, supporting ongoing infrastructure upkeep. Um, and so together with their capital that we just spoke about a second ago, plus these two items, which are technically maintenance, but they're higher in cost, um, all of that together brings you to your total of your forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to be brought forward. And those were requests that were made, um, from your director.
Okay. Say that again? Gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, so, so after hearing that, do you s- are you still supporting that these are the needs for the stormwater?
Yes, sir.
That should be?
I'm still, um, agree with it after here.
Okay.
Because we do have a bush hog and we also have a street sweeper.
Okay. Gotcha, they need to be maintenance. I never see the street sweeper, though.
She sweeps.
She sweeps? Okay.
Uh, and, and to that point, because, uh, I, I don't either, is, is there, it's on the schedule, uh, every other week or just?
See, um, not as on the schedule, I think every week, but I think if not the schedule, the sweep is down at this time, probably where you have to sit.
Okay.
And so, that's why it's in the budget to get it made.
Okay, understood, and then once it's fixed, is it, is it on?
We'll go back on there and once it's on the schedule, I'll give Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, to get it out to y'all as well for you none.
Okay, we can continue.
There's one additional item that I would like to see too while we're on stormwater. Um, a couple of years ago, the city management had requested to open up internal service charges, um, and other funds to support the general fund costs. So, one of my concerns and also one of your auditors' concerns, your prior auditor, Purvis Gray, actually brought this up originally, um, was that there's no clear methodology for how your internal service charges are being allocated out to other funds. And that's especially important to have, um, for instance, in this situation, the stormwater money is only to be used to support stormwater and for costs associated with the stormwater fund. So, it's important that management should be able to justify the, the amount of money being taken from the stormwater fund and move to the general fund for internal service charges. So there's been significant, um, internal discussion with staff about that, um, and at this point, there is no clear methodology for how these were derived, not to say there wasn't one, it's just the staff, um, that is there at the moment is unable to provide any history on that to be able to justify these charges. So, I have period four, the same amounts that you had in your budget last year, as long as the department or fund was able to, um, pay that for the year and still, you know, be able to move forward. But I do wanna bring that, you know, to your attention, that, you know, management is, um, having significant discussion about these internal service charges. Um, and at some point, there will need to be a methodology that shows how this is calculated and how each department and fund is getting their proportionate share of whatever these costs actually are. So I did wanna bring that to your attention, so you're all aware of that.
Thank you, Brittany. Um, I do recall this being presented to us as, uh, each department being responsible for surcharges just for day-to-day operations, for instance. Uh, if there are notifications that is going out from stormwater regarding, you know, a spill, or if there are notifications going out from any department regarding the day-to-day operations by mail or for use of copy machine, or just for miscellaneous operations from each department, because, um, individual departments did not have their own ability to do these miscellaneous things, send out notifications, do mailouts. Uh, that, that, that was the explanation I do vividly recall for these internal service charges. But if you're not stating that there was no written policy or justification for the funds being allocated that way, um, I do think it's something we need to take a look at.
And I've seen this in, you know, other communities as well, where, you know, they'll even say costs such as legal, HR, the city manager, you know, uh, certain functions of the commission, you know, to where you're overseeing all departments of the city, but like you said, you know, you don't need an HR director just for the sewer department, hey, you know, and things like that. Um, you know, so some of those charges, you know, could be grouped together and say, you know, it's these charges that we're speaking about, and this is how we're allocating them. That's what they were unable to locate, not to say there wasn't a methodology at all, it was just they couldn't find anything written specifically, or, you know, what the grouping and breakdown was.
Okay.
So that's something that they're definitely going to be working to provide, so we can make sure that the amounts that are charged out to these other departments are, you know, their share and what they're supposed to be.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Brianna, since I've had that conversation with you, I found that Brechi, um, previous finance director, um,
Okay.
It didn't make sense to me, so I will send that to you to see if we can work together and figure out, um, how she came up with her numbers.
Okay.
So can we also have that brought back to us once you guys get it worked out? Thank you. Next item, next, um, next item?
So, one quick question, I, I, I do, so Brianna, you stated that the projected activity for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, the, that's based off of, uh, the ordinance that was passed, the military rate that was passed, the nine, what was it, nine, seven, nine?
For your stormwater fund, um, it's based on your special revenue assessment, um, that was in your resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventy. I can pull it up, I don't recall exactly what it was, but I have a note of it, so I can pull it up.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that I, that I heard you correctly.
Yes, ma'am, I, I don't recall what the exact rate was, your staff may know off the top of their head, I'm pulling it up now. Um, so your preliminary assessment rate was eight dollars twenty-seven cents per month for equivalent stormwater unit. Um, and then your full assessment role is two hundred forty-four thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents, and then we captured the ninety-five percent expecting collection rate.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't.
I do not.
Fire?
And so, your fire fund, I would like to say this fund is not balanced, so this time, um, we have had significant discussion with your fire chief, um, and your finance department about, uh, the fire fund. And so, we'll go down your key items, just like we did with the last department. And, um, I'm sure that your fire chief, um, can fill in, you know, his needs that he has. So, first of all, this is another special revenue fund, meaning all of the revenues that come into your fire department can only be used for the fire department and what they need to do, um, to provide fire services for the community. We have budgeted six hundred seventy-one thousand fifty dollars in fire assessment fee revenue, and that's per resolution number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine. Again, that is at a ninety-five percent collection rate. In addition to that, there is ten thousand dollars for a state grant for public safety to be used for design and engineering for the new fire station only. There is sixty-eight thousand in other financing sources, uh, for a brush truck, which, uh, there's been some significant discussion about. Um, and that's basically all of your large revenues coming into the fire fund. As far as your major expenses in the fire fund, there are no hurricane expenses budgeted. Uh, your management had directed that they did not want to budget for disaster-related expenses, as you're, um, you're never really sure what those might be, um, and so they have elected not to, uh, budget for disaster costs. The reason I mention that is because the fire department is a public safety department and their costs are generally high, but they have been excluded in your upcoming budget. There's twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars in contract services, which includes your fire dispatch, smart notices, uh, massive services in your active nine-eleven app. There is a seven hundred fifty dollar requested increase for wifi and communications that was requested by your director and included in your budget. Sixteen hundred dollars in rituals and leases includes a fit test machine and a Toshiba copier. Three thousand dollars in building repairs and maintenance to be used to fix fire code violations, um, at our department. Three thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, just about eighty-five hundred dollars in training. Um, I just mentioned that there's no increase available. Um, there had been a requested increase for certifying some potential new hires through South Florida State College, but there was no funding available at this time for that, but I have called that out, so your director can address that with you, um, as well. Um, as he knows their needs, uh, you know, beyond what we would know from a finance side. With that said, uh, we need to note that there is no transfer into the fire department in your budget at this time, as there's been no approved transfers by the commission, so there's, you know, none in there at this time. Your budget that you're in currently included a two hundred and seventeen, uh, thousand dollar transfer from the mobile home park, um, and no other transfers at that time. With that said, I know that the city mobile home park money was kind of set aside and earmarked to be used only at the direction of the commission, so with that said, I've not included any transfer from the mobile home park, uh, because we don't have a directive for that at the moment. So, with that said, we have presented the fire fund as is, it is not balanced, because they're unable to balance with the revenues coming in versus the expenditures that are needed to operate, so, um, those are your key items at this time. And there are also no fire fund reserves available to balance their budget. So any balancing must come from another fund within the city.
Brianna, thank you. I appreciate your, your key concepts. Um, before, first and foremost, it's a pleasure to be here on this afternoon with you, as always. Um, I'm sure you were taking notes throughout that process, as we have been, um, over the course of this past year, so, before I continue on the key items and circle back to some of these that Brianna mentioned, as far as me clarifying and making a comment on, do you have any questions that jumped out at you?
No, I, I wanna see where the shortfall is and what is the plan to make up the shortfall, if there's one.
So, um, currently, as, as unfortunately discussed many a times, so the revenue, uh, Brianna is correct, the ninety-five percent collection rate, we, we generally budget that fire assessment revenue on a ninety-five percent, basically, um, just to account for any, anybody that contested, or there's a, there's a reporting error on the whole kind of property pressures, um, and with some, collecting some of those fees, and obviously collecting this. Um, so currently, uh, you may remember in the years past, and this, this goes back to Brianna's comment about the mobile home park fund, um, I do not have it in front of me, we've been discussing it at length, back and forth with finance the last week or so, about, uh, whether or not that was actually provided as a resolution. I, I would think that we would all agree that, um, this city commission was aware that that was, um, had been discussed and approved in years past, but to answer your question in front of me, I do not necessarily know if we ever executed that by resolution. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, Brianna, we'll find that out. Um, to clarify, the two hundred and seventeen thousand, from what I have been told the last few years in my tenure here, was the interest that was received from the sale of the mobile home park. Um, I first initially, myself, when, when this came about two, two budget years ago, two fiscal years ago, um, recommended that that go into the general and then, you know, appropriated, that way it's the same amount of money. Um, but neither here nor there, the last, I can confirm the last two fiscal years, it's been listed as a revenue source, approved by commission, just whether or not it's been by resolution or just through the budgetary process, that it has been in my budget. So that is up for discussion and, and approval, of, of course, so, um, that is one of the, the shortfalls, and Brianna can jump in here if I, uh, missed up, and by the way, Commissioner, I apologize, the packet I've received, I'm currently on revenue, uh, page five, if you would like, revenues for the fire fund. One of five for mine, of the total packet, I didn't know what you needed. It's one of five for the fire fund for, for, uh, discussion, and then it would be page five in the total.
Is it five of five on this one, correct?
It, it would be one of five on this, okay.
Yeah, yeah, one of five for the revenue.
One of five in the fire fund. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Everything that Chief has said is correct. One thing I would add is that, going back in the history, the, uh, fire department used to be a part of the general fund, uh, years ago, before you had a special revenue fund established. The reason your special revenue fund was established is because when you're collecting a fire assessment, uh, those dollars are restricted, can only be used for fire, and the thought behind that was is as the fire department would hopefully grow and change over time, the thought was is that the fire assessment coming in would eventually, um, provide enough revenues for the fire fund to support itself. And so, fast forward a few years, um, and your fire assessment has increased, but just not to the capacity to cover your full-time fire department that you have at this time. And so the thought process years ago was that, until the fire fund could establish itself and support itself, then transfers in from other funds would be used, um, basically as a transfer in lieu of taxes, uh, to support the fund and then to build it over the years. And so, at this point, we're at one of those, um, you know, at some point, we'll need a legislative decision to be made on how you want the fire fund to sustainably support itself over time, because truly, at some point, the fire fund should be able to support itself and not just barely make it, because your fire service has a lot of needs that need to be met, and their service is essential to the community, and you've already established that that's important, um, to your city. So that's kind of a history of what happened with the fire department. So this is kind of an inherited issue, this, this didn't arise under your current chief or even the former chief. Uh, you know, this has been a, a building department for many, many years.
Brianna, thank you, uh, I saw you may have had a question there.
Yeah, I, my question is, what are the billable services that the fire provide that could go towards being sustainable? What are they?
Well, the only thing, uh, obviously, it's the same as any other ci- municipal department, we can only, you know, statutorily charge, um, you know, non-outdoor taxes for a special assessment fee like this. The other thing we have done, and we passed this, uh, you all as a body, with myself, this last fiscal year, we passed fire inspection fees. Um, I will say that that does not cover, the, the intent of the fire inspection fees is to help all set a very small portion of, if we get into a point where we have to hire a part-time fire inspector to go do those, because right now, we're trying to do those with suppression staff, send the engine crew out to get those done, which is really unheard of, but as, as you all know, you know, in a small city, we have to do multiple, wear multiple hats, so we're trying to, um, kill two birds with one stone, so, so to speak, um, with that, so back to your question, um, transfers, like Brianna said, out of other funds, whether it be the general or whatever the body of the commission so chooses, the special assessment fund, which in this, for special revenue fund, which in this case would be the fire assessment fee, um, and then a, a fire inspection fee, so to speak, so, um, there are two others that are available, but they're very minute in nature, and what I mean by that is, um, there are other municipalities that charge like insurance companies to try to recoup costs for vehicle accidents and stuff like that. In my experience, it's been very unsuccessful in other municipalities, just, um, as a public great relations issue, uh, you know, and, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, people, you, you, you run, we run the risk of, you know, somebody saying, well, hey, I'm paying this special fire assessment fee, y'all are getting me from every angle, like, you know, if, if that makes sense. So that comes up a lot with other municipalities that do that. Um, obviously, that's legal work through the attorney's office, have to be done by that. I stated several times, and I know I've spoken before many times, um, sometimes long-winded and I apologize, um, but the, in the past, in one of our presentations, you may or may not remember, we talked about other municipalities, and local market data research with our fire departments in the area are anywhere from nineteen percent to about sixty-five, seventy percent of what the fire fund covers. So if that's to give you an, an indication, it's not just a fourth of anything, it's, it's just, um, you know, un- unfortunately, I'm not very familiar with the sheriff's department, but if they had a fund, I'm sure that their fund wouldn't cover that completely as well.
Correct.
And I know last year, you all, uh, were city commissioners then, and we went through the discussion in, in increasing the fire assessment. Um, I believe it passed unanimously, um, which was wonderful, we, you may, the part you may not remember is we had a pretty lengthy discussion on, they gave us that in numbers of, hey, the fire assessment, here's what you would have to charge to completely cover your services.
Yes.
And it was gonna be so astronomical, um, you know, that even I recommended that, that's, that's not the case. I, I would look towards the long-term goal of trying to fund as much of the fire department budget as possible, obviously, I have a special revenue fund, there's a fire assessment, um, fee. And then, that, the, the shortfalls would be at recommendation of financing you all as a body.
That number is what, though, is that the two seventeen?
I'll make sure, I'm just gonna get my eyes back on the right product. So, no, sir, so, I, I can give you, so if you will go to... In the fire special revenue fund, uh, presentation, it would be page. Five of five. The current projected activity for this current fiscal budget year. Correct me if I'm wrong Brianna, this is not including the transfer currently of the two seventeen. Is that correct Brianna?
Are you talking about fiscal year twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, this coming fiscal year, um, where the shortfall would be.
Yes, this coming fiscal year, um, you have total revenues coming in at seventy, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. And expected expenditures of one million, one eighty-seven, nine hundred and fourteen. With a projected shortfall of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars. So while this may seem way out of whack, if we compare this to your, uh, budget that you're in right now for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. You have the large two hundred and something, uh, transfer coming in from the city mobile home park. And we're expecting an additional almost two hundred thousand dollar shortfall in the year that you're in now. So if you compare the year you're in now with the year coming up, the shortfall is basically the same. For what fire revenues can cover versus the expenditures. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, um, it does Brianna, thank you so much. So if.
You're welcome.
If, if the two hundred and seventeen thousand come along, which has been historically approved, I'm saying it, it has to be here. But if that is transferred, then, you know, rough math, um, maybe you're looking at, um, two hundred and twenty, uh, thousand. Shortfall or, or difference there. So I, I, I believe that is the question moving forward is where does, where do we as a team, as, as the commission as a body decide? That we can fund that additional money from?
And the additional, if you bring in two seventeen from the mobile home park, the additional is two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars.
I'll keep in mind, we had some overages going in, going back to the original, uh, key talking points that Brianna went through initially. Um, you know, we had some overages this year. One of them is overtime, overtime, um, we had some for disaster, obviously from the storm. And then we always have some for, um, general operations. I, I, I think, I believe I've expressed this before, as in. You know, if, if Mr. Keen has, or, or Mr. Allen has somebody call out that day, we may be able to pick up the slack, although not easy. Somebody else may be able to do double work that day. Unfortunately, you know, in public safety, that's not that case. So every time, uh, we're currently staffed, this is a refresher, um, for everybody that, that they have forgotten. Currently staffed with a captain and a firefighter every day, um, which puts us, we, but we have to be, we're in a minimum of two people. So if, if, uh, if, if the mayor were to take vacation day that day, we have to fill that position. So, um, what happened last year through the budgetary process was that got trimmed down, as we trimmed through the budgets. Um, with that administrative, administration at the time, they're not here to answer for themselves, so I'll leave that at that. But it just got trimmed down for the understanding of, you know, that's gonna hit to that budget.
Uh, no, 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 I'm, I'm taking it in. No, no.
I have, I have a question. You got sixty-eight thousand, I believe, for new brush truck? Why can't we make that, we got, I think you said we had a one, ten years old? I believe, is that the one you wanna replace or?
So, uh, so, yes, and, and I was gonna try to save this one again, but, um, this is gonna be kind of a, um, a, a discussion piece for sure. And I wanna make sure that it's completely clear and prepared to you all. But to, uh, Vice Mayor, to, um, give you a little background, this is a brush truck that was damaged. I came before you all with a resolution, um, with a proposal on how to fund that brush truck. Based off of, um, you know, budget reports that were presented to me that the money was there. You may remember we surplus a bunch of vehicles, shows in that GL. So that was approved by you all as a body to replace that utilizing that fund. A PO was entered for that brush truck, um, we were gonna fund that brush truck out of that account. Um, and through this budgetary process with Brianna's help, you know, it, it's, it's been way above me. That, that money was used for budget appropriations as a short, shortfalls. And now that, that brush truck is about to be here. Like, so what we did, in other words, not sugarcoating anything. I've been told by Brianna and her staff and our finance staff, had the finance team at the time approve that PO. Money wasn't there, so now the truck's gonna be due. So I also, um, before I answer your questions, and I'll be glad to answer all of them. I will say that, um, I don't believe in bringing a problem to you without a solution. So I had an epiphany a few days ago as we were discussing this in, in detail, uh, keeping Mr. Brown updated on what was going on. So the epiphany was instead of having to come to you with an emergency resolution to try to pull money from a city that's already, you know, tapped out. You know, I, I believe we're on the same page there and understand that, um, that we move it to next fiscal year. So we're that close to this year, so we can move it as a capital expenditure in this coming fiscal year. Instead of trying to scramble to do it this year. So I know that's a lot more than what you guys heard, but I hope I clarified about the truck. Um, the truck was one that was damaged, um, it was damaged out of fire.
I remember that, yeah.
One of, one of the employees was transported to hospital, but they saved the house. So luckily he's okay. But anyway, I, obviously I will open up to any of the questions you have regarding that.
I don't know if this is a direct question for you or for staff, but where was, where were the funds reallocated?
So they were used, Brianna can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I've been brought up to speed that they were used to reallocate, uh, or excuse me, not reallocate, it's the wrong term. But to do budget amendments, uh, you know, towards the end of the fiscal year, uh, much, nothing out of the ordinary, that happens all the time. You all get budget amendments towards the end of fiscal year is as money gets, as we balance the budget. Um, so it was used to balance, um, budgets, um, as a, um, budget.
Sir, he's right. So at the end of the year, what happens is, is if you have a fund that's in a shortfall situation. Which your fire fund was in twenty twenty-four, which is the year that he's speaking about. So at the end of that year, that fund had a shortfall unfortunately. And so all of the revenues that were received in the year were applied to all of the expenditures that you had. And then the balance of what the fire fund can't pay will have to be covered by other funds. So, and they actually, you know, took the fire fund into, you know, negative reserves basically. Because they didn't have enough money, you know, to pay for their expenses. So with that said, he had, and I was pulling up my notes on that, cause, uh, the chief and I and finance have been talking about this, um, for a week. There was, the money that he is speaking about is that the fire department actually sold some surplus equipment. Um, in your twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and that amount of money was sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And then later on in the fiscal year, you received about eleven thousand dollars in insurance, um, funding to help pay to replace the vehicle. And then in the current fiscal year that you're in right now, they sold some additional equipment and received eighteen thousand, seventy-five dollars. But unfortunately, again, you know, his department is looking at a shortfall. So all of that money that they raised basically for themselves by selling equipment and going through things and, you know, getting their insurance money. All of that was used to balance their budgets with their existing expenses. And so now what he's facing is, um, you know, he still needs this brush truck. But there's no funds in your current budget to pay for it without borrowing from another fund or receiving a grant in order to pay for the purchase. But usually, if you're getting a grant, you have to apply for those, you know, well in advance. And at this point, I don't know that that would be, um, an option. And so for the budget that you're in right now, we have place marked the sixty-eight thousand as other financing sources. Meaning we have to find a source to finance the, uh, the brush truck. And we called that out because we know it's specifically for the brush truck at this time. Um, and we wanted to keep that separate from any of the other requests because it's one of those that, you know, a decision has to be made. They need the brush truck, um, it wasn't approved purchase at the time, um, even though, uh, there was maybe, um. Something going on at the time, uh, but the money wasn't actually there at the end of the year. Um, and so now we just wanna make sure that whatever happens with this budget. That he's still able to secure the purchase that was approved for his brush truck because they need it. We just need to find a way to finance it. But the other side of that token is the fire fund is not cash flowing, obviously they're in a shortfall situation. So even though they need to borrow the money, um, they can't afford to pay a loan back at this time. The fire fund cannot. So if the fire fund needs a loan, it would need to come internally.
Uh, so a question and, and, um, forgive, forgive my ignorance and, and I've, I've been up here. The shortest amount of time, um, is, is this a, um, a couple of rough years that we're experiencing? Is this a, you're gonna face the same challenge with the fire department next year and the following year and the following years? Just trying to potentially understand, know what's happening, is that we've reached a few rough years in the rough patch or? I'm not, not saying that you foresee the future, but wanting to understand.
Yes, sir. I, I completely understand what you're asking. And, uh, to, to answer your question quite bluntly, um, no, it's, it's for the foreseeable future. Until we can, as a city, figure out a way to fund public safety properly. And what I mean by that, I, I, I remember it very vividly and I quite, can't quite remember if the mayor was the mayor at the time. But my first tenure here, I gave a quite long presentation and I think at the end of it, he said, great job, but. You know, shoot it straight, what do you need for this budget to, to fund a functional fire department, meet legal requirements? And at the time, I said one point two and a half to one point three. I don't know if you remember that?
I do.
And that's really kinda where we're at and it's gonna continue to fall that way every year. And we're gonna, um, you know, we're gonna see shortfalls just because I can tell you that depending on my budget. Exactly to the venue, what we need to operate, but I can't tell you is, is leave and medical leave. Gentlemen and ladies getting injured and extended leave that was unbudgeted and creating overtime expenses. That is really, uh, every fire chief in this county is over fire, uh, over budget right now. I spent the end of last week discussing that with them. If any of them could find a way out, believe me, I, I would tell you. I, I can't tell you this, the, the biggest issue we're gonna face, separate from the brush truck issue right now, I'm sure you'll have a few more questions about that. Um, is, is overtime. We can, um, we can budget or schedule, uh, leave, what you can't budget for is the unseen. Whereas if, if I own a private business and my administrative assistant calls out sick because their kid's sick that day, we just don't fill the spot. You know, so we don't go over budget and what happens obviously in public safety. So to answer your question, I, we're gonna, whether it's me here or the next chief, like, we're gonna be telling the same thing.
So our options are to pull in money from either the reserve or general fund or something like that?
We are, this is the first budget workshop and, and so we haven't given a recommendation, we're just going through line items.
Okay.
And so, and at a later date, we will come back with a recommendation on how we're gonna fund the budget gap. And just in response to a couple of things I've heard here earlier. A lot of this is because of tax base that we have, okay? And, uh, apart from fire, which has two funding streams, they have a fire rescue assessment and they also are paid out of general fund. Those, you, you see that in some communities, some communities you don't. But it's all based on tax base. If we don't grow the community, either through housing, jobs, you name it. Uh, we're never gonna see that growth that we need. A lot of communities, they survive on that increment or the growth that occurs as a result of new development and that type of thing. Now I understand that, you know, in this part of the county, we wanna, we don't wanna grow. But then we have people that live here that wanna see things happen. And so if the council wants to get aggressive with some of these things, this is strategic plan that we need to really put in place. So that it informs decisions, especially our budgetary decisions on how we move. That way we can explain it to the residents that, look, we have to do this or we will, these are my words, die on a vine, okay? Public safety is one of the biggest expenditures we'll have in municipal government. In some communities, it makes up more than fifty percent of it, okay? Depending on what state you're in, it could be as high as seventy-five. Now, we don't have EMS or a COPCN, so we don't do MS pickup, right? That's done by another, so we're not able to generate revenue by taking people to hospital. And so, uh, but, you know, if, and we don't have fire prevention, so we do annual inspections for that state law, right?
We're, we're implementing that as we speak.
Okay, alright. So, so this is a cost, the community wants the fire department, we just need to find a way to fund it. And obviously, it sounds like we've done some fi- financial forecasting over the past. Need to look at it again and, um, and try to find a way to pay for it. Today's the first day, okay? So let's hear from everybody and then kinda, you know, in, interject what you'd like to see, the more, the merrier. And, uh, but this is, this is not uncommon, this is very, uh, uh, very common ground that we're on right now, day one. Get worried next week when, if you see an email from me saying, uh, something happened. And, uh, but we'll work with the financial consultant, um, I have some ideas. And hopefully by the time we, hopefully we can plug this budget gap. Now, the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, you know, um. You know, I didn't, I didn't think it was that much, I mean, cause the report I got earlier was about half of that. And so we're deferring a purchase which will pay for the brush truck in next fiscal year. Now, I believe there's a control issue with respect to the purchase order system and some other things. And I'm gonna look into that specifically because I'm struggling with how could we encumber funds? And then the funds get rebudgeted, but then I also know that at the end of the, at the end of the year, if he hadn't spent the money. We would do what we had to do with to balance the budget to get it out the door. So I understand both sides of it. We need to find out why the money was moved. If it, if it was, if it was directed by the council staying its own fund and that's what I'm gonna find out. I made a note here, we'll, we'll get back.
Thank you for answering that because that was my question.
Yeah.
And also for clarity, I, I, in, inside of your comment, um, I don't know where, um, my colleagues stand, but I know I, I am for growth, we have to.
Yeah.
I, I think there is, is, um, a, a conversation about, you know, how everyone feels about growth. But it, this is factual reasons of why there has to be growth.
Yes, yes. This needs to be paid for by others. You know, you don't want the taxpayer, the property tax, the property owner that lives here to show all the, all the public safety. Business people can do that. If we open up, we can have a plan or a strategy to push some of these costs onto other people that don't live here. So it's not a bad thing to have other people pay the bills, that's when you do that. Now, if we grow the tax base, we also grow this other space, I call it the utility space. So the bigger, not the bigger, I, the more our tax base increase, the other services pick up. They're gonna need gas, they're gonna need electric, they're gonna need, you know, all these different things that we benefit from. And so it really makes, it really makes, it really gives us the ability to kinda move things around and manage the place better. But small town, we're at nine point four or five, whatever it is, military, that is high. But it's not uncommon when there's been net new growth in your tax base. You know, annexations, something, these are, this is one way of nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine ways to grow your tax base. But these are things you gotta look at. And so your strategic plan will be helpful because what it'll do, you'll discuss specifically what you're gonna focus on. And you can make sure that you direct staff that, hey, look, we wanna do these three things over the next five years. And we wanna do one of these things really well in the first year and in year two. And so Lisa, that, that's the reason why you want a strategic plan because everybody here understands and staff knows. I think public safety most likely will be one of your goals on what you wanna see after.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's, that's all I have, but we can go through the process. I, I, I like what I hear.
Okay, and, and one other point, one last point I have, a question I have is in regard to the transfer of funds. Uh, from the sale of the mobile home park. So basically you're saying Brianna, although we approved that, those funds were never transferred?
No, the, the city mobile home park funds, they are transferred in your current budget now. It's just that budget is still unable to balance even with that transfer, their needs were beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, awesome. I just wanted to make sure I, I've heard you, understood you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you were talking about what she talked about when you covered the stormwater, but how other departments should pay, you know?
No, I, I was talking about the sale of mobile home park. I, I just want to make sure I understood what she said. No, no, I I was talking about the sale of mobile home park. I I just want to make sure I understood what she said. I thought she was indicating, or he was indicating, although we approved those funds from the sale of the mobile home park to be transferred to the fire department that he had not received it. That's what I thought I heard. So what she said that it that it was.
Yeah, so.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, well, it's this, that's why we're here. Because, uh, as I understood it is that the concern was, was it done by resolution? And then if that is still an option to do that again?
Oh, again?
No, I'm just saying.
And I I can have that answer by the end of the second year.
We can answer, we can answer now. I mean, you know, whenever you wanna move mistress. We we, that's why the resolutions are important.
Correct.
If it directs us to do something. And I don't know how this brush truck, brush truck thing kind of stuff will crack, but we're gonna find out. Like you know before, you know, we.
Yeah, and and to go to the rest of the grounds, I think it's, again, bringing something forward to the body of the commission. Without some type of idea or solution, I think it's just, uh. Me personally, I can't speak for others, but me personally, some of the frustration, um, has been just, you know, the change. And I think that goes to, uh, you know, how some of these things happen without steady, you know, steady, steady leadership and and steady permanent people in those positions. And I know our initial conversation with Mr. Brown was great as far as making sure that we establish that, whether he's here for his interim term or he's here long term. Correct me if that is a.
No, no, I, you know, this is, this is, this is one of the biggest things that small towns face. It's called turnover. There's a price for it. And and what I've done in the past is calculate turnover, so I can give you a real number of what it costs your community. Now, what the chief is talking about, I agree somewhat, but I believe that if you, the body, uh, if you prepare a strategic plan that makes sense, then the staff can operate, operationalize that plan. And and provide very, very spot-on things, like for example, the departments would have to generate their own internal operating plan on how they're gonna perform, but it starts at the top.
Yes.
Like I said, it doesn't have to be a lab, it could be as simple as we wanna improve public safety. It could be as simple as promote economic development or grow our economic tax base. These are very basic things. Now then, what does that look like? Then you work with the staff and you say, okay, any applications for parcels more than fifty acres? Now, choose fifty acres because, you know, there's not a lot of regulations on things less than fifty acres. If, because you don't have a planning department, those kinds of things, if you go more than fifty acres, then you're subject to a lot of other regulations that that you really need a planning consultant to help you with, but. I get that. I think having the pop, the plan, the strategic plan will be very helpful for the staff because it will eliminate what the chief just said. Right now, you have employees that send text messages to the city manager every day. Text messages, they should know what their job is from day one. They can write a report every two weeks, you know? And these are the kinds of challenges that you're having right now. It's not necessary to do that, especially in this day of, you know, uh, email and, you know, and just those kinds of things. Putting a report, I can read it for myself and explain it to you well. Emergencies are different. We need to inform the council. You pick up the phone, you call them. You know, we got somebody leaving, we should call, you know, we should text, that kind of thing. Now, for me, we're in Florida. I don't wanna text you guys, okay? I'll call them, I'll call them. And definitely make note of, you know, when things are very important, make sure the council's informed, because obviously you live here, you gotta be explaining stuff to people.
Chief, I I want, I want to get one thing clear here. We we, I I know we voted to get you a new brush truck. They took that money and put it in the general fund?
Uh, no, sir. So it was to to clarify, it was used to fund shortages at the end of the fiscal year at budget amendments.
In that department.
In that department.
In that department.
In that department, yes, sir.
In that same department.
In my department.
Oh, I I missed one, strictly.
And I don't think that that was clear. I I know it wasn't clear for me at the top that it was within the department.
Yeah, it it was within the department.
Right.
It was within the department. Um, and and so what happened is that happened last September. Uh, September twelfth was the meeting that I brought it to you all on at the end of the fiscal year. Um, those budget amendments are done, obviously, at the end of the fiscal year to shore up and balance budgets, because we know how to do that. Um, and then now you fast forward a year as as this truck's ready to be delivered, I'm working with finance and.
The money's not.
And then we gotta figure something out too. You should have seen my face when Brianna, through Brianna had to say, I had to come back before you had explained it, so. Although, um, I have big shoulders, I feel like probably there was, I probably could have stayed on top of that a little bit better. So that's one of those processes that can be.
That budget did it, guys.
Yeah.
Especially if the council approved it with the residents, it should have moved. So like I said, let me find out what happened and I'll I'll email you and.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nope, done. Thank you.
While we're on the fire fund, they also contribute ninety-five thousand dollars to the general fund for those internal service charges. So, um, just to keep that in mind, that's their portion. Almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so while we're talking about balancing their budget, that's worth donating.
Thank you.
Yeah, that that's a large chunk. That's a large chunk of money.
Hey, hey.
Good afternoon.
So we're gonna go with the budget, um, again, if you wanna go line by line, if you have any questions that's left to you.
Go go ahead, CRA director, let's go ahead.
Brianna, wanna go through the, um, your key item? Yes.
Please.
Yes, so for your CRA fund, that's is, uh, the last of your special revenue funds. Your revenue in this fund is largely based on abhorrent tax revenue, which is, uh, estimated to be eight hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, and this is based on the city's portion of the abhorrent and the county's portion of the abhorrent added together. Um, there's six thousand dollars in property and land rental revenue related to your bank lease. Um, and those are the majority of your revenues, um, coming in here. For your expenditures, it's mostly related to capital. You have a hundred thousand dollars for capital improvements, which is for the CRA lottery allocation, uh, for commercial properties. Three thousand dollars for capital machinery and equipment and a hundred thousand dollars for local grants, um, for facade. And that's also a CRA, uh, allocation as well requested by your department. And I also had a note that they were revamping the program. This is one of your funds that actually is expected to carry some funding forward into the next year. And so I want to let you know what that amount is. That amount is expected to be two hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. They're expected to carry that forward into reserves to be able to be used for future years, um, for capital projects. And your internal service charges in this department are twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, that's good news. Yeah, that's great news.
Why don't you give us some pointers to the chief?
Sir, thank you, sir.
Brown said, though, once we bring in, this is saying, this is saying, we get to build a lot of our homes and so we're dealing with the abhorrent tip that, you know, that comes our way, so that's why it's not popping so nice.
Yeah.
And so we want to, uh, make Main Street look good, you know, K look good, so.
Yeah, I I was gonna say that, you know, it's great to see that number. Um, it it is, it is, uh, less, less, uh, fulfilling to see vacant buildings and and all the things that this fund can be. And I I know you've been working on that. Uh, I I was just approached today to ask what has the CRA, uh, you know, done in the last year? But I know there was restructuring and rebuilding that needed to take place, um, and I I, uh, reached out as well via email. Um, so as as much as it's smile, makes me smile to see the number, what I hope is that aggressively we'll be able to start to attack the areas of slum and blight, um, in in our city.
You will, you will see that, I guarantee that, I'm sending all the ready.
Great.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. That's all I have.
I I just think it's, it's a good tool here because, because you haven't gotten the hit that you're looking for yet. But you'll be able to use this money. Now, I know that looks like a lot of money, but you might use this money, you do like a eighty million dollar deal to do a lifestyle center or something like that in your downtown, okay? So so when it comes, you'll know what to do. You'll have a a source there that definitely you could look at a way of paying for it. Even though we got the challenges with public safety, this is what this money is for. It's for that, when that day comes. So you're doing, you're doing what I think you should do, based on what I think. Even though you're tipless, meaning that you don't contribute to the tip, uh, you, it's only, it only comes from the county. A lot of jurisdictions, they do vote, you contribute, county contributes and you, and and, um, and obviously the school part, they don't have to contribute.
Yeah, I I wanna emphasize to me, there is a a bit of urgency of now, one of the city-owned properties that fall within the city. It's kind of crosses over, had a, some type of fire or, uh, in one of those. So addressing this to me is before the lifestyle center or light comes in, we should be aggressively addressing it now. Cause I think there are some public safety concerns with that building in particular and maybe some of the other properties within the CRA, yeah.
Oh, good, you got you.
Oh, okay.
But we do have some, I'll talk about the ready master that wants to, to talk in regards to that building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to, uh, item two, which is the review of enterprise funds, operating budget and expenditures, uh, capital improvement program with water. Tommy King got water and sewer. Waste water.
Key item. Sorry, it's a little hard to hear sometimes. Are you ready for your key item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for your water fund, um, we have a three point two million dollar SRF grant, uh, budgeted for your water department. We've budgeted a two point one percent increase, uh, by rate, uh, ordinance for your rates in the water department. And those are your key, uh, drivers really for revenues in your water fund. For expenditures, uh, we noted their internal service, uh, charges are allocated to this department as well. Uh, the amount of those charges is one hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars for the water department. There is a ten percent increase, uh, allocated for the increase in cost for chlorine. Uh, and this also affects your sewer department, so we have that budgeted in both of those departments. Um, and that is at the request of your director, um, and that is just a pure cost increase. There are no disaster-related expenditures budgeted in this department. Your, your director has requested some pretty critical needs, uh, in his department for some capital. Uh, first off, we're budgeting eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars for failed hydrant replacements, um, and a gas alarm, a chlorine gas alarm. Eighty-eight thousand three hundred dollars for your contract with, uh, USG for the ground storage restoration contract. We have fifteen thousand thirty-three dollars in unassigned, uh, capital outlay for equipment. And there's a fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollar transfer to the general fund, again, based off of your prior year allocation. Uh, those are all your key items for the water fund itself, but you also have a water impact fund, which is funded by impact fees, and so I'll go over those key items as well. You have estimated water impact fee revenues based on your prior year activity. And there is a seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, capital outlay for a water permit capacity project. But the only, um, costs of this project that can be applied to your impact fee fund are only those that directly support growth and expansion, uh, which can be paid for with restricted impact fees. Um, and so once that project, uh, gets detailed out and scoped, those items will need to be pulled out and those can be paid for with impact fees. So those are those, uh, two funds that are related to each other. Both water, it's just your impact fees are restricted and can only be used, uh, basically for ex- expansion and growth.
I'll entertain any questions and 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 go, uh, line by line if you'd like.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Just speaking to what she was saying about the impact fee and that, that you said, that. Brown has been talking a little bit about, and Mr. Brown go there previously, um, the data center and 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 some of this, this other, other growth. There's gonna be a need to get a consultant, an engineer involved. So the bands, we got what they said they want, um, but you're gonna be careful what they say that you can pump out of the ground. And it's gonna require a consultant engineer to go back and split the money and ask for some capacity back that y'all had a year ago, um, that y'all pumped. But it's gonna make you jump through a bunch of hoops to to get some of that work back and and that's what's gonna require a consultant engineer. And like, like you were saying, like she was saying, that can be, uh, paid with those impact fees.
So the, um, the two items she spoke to, I think, one, she said some type of pump or or test for, uh, gas?
Yeah, so this is, um, this chlorine, along with, I'm just gonna be, they've been bad since, since, since I've got here. And if you go back, you'll find that they're, they're submitted each year. And as this budget process, um, happens every year, just just to kinda let you know that I go through the, the leadership turnover and and everything. And either my, well, my, whoever's supposed to replace me, um, after I leave, they're gonna become Mr. Brown, asking the timeframe, when we spend these capital lives. What's happened in the past is, um, you know, you can't day one just go and buy all this stuff that you're requesting. You gotta, gotta fill that fund, that bucket first. Um, but with turnover and stuff, it's the last thing, you know, bearable, you know, and then recently we, you know, really stopped spending altogether. So a lot of these items continue to get carried over. That's a small one, and I agree with Brianna when she was talking to me about this. That we need to make sure this this happens. It's it's a small item, um, analyzer to to put over there, that both those are going here. There is one we're playing.
And that's a eighty thousand dollar.
Oh, no, no, sir, no, sir. It's a, that's a three thousand dollar.
So the item she mentioned was?
The eighty, the eighty-one thousand. Um, now, in the past, um, when we had full manpower and staff, when I first started, y'all were, uh, contracting out, um, hydrant replacements. Um, so if we we get fully staffed again and 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 they have the ability to do it here, some, some of that cost can be trimmed. That eighty-one thousand, based off of those quotes that were coming in at that time for instruction of of installing those, those, those hydrants.
Gotcha. Do we have the hydrants on stock or we would have to also purchase?
No, that would, that would, that that price would include purchasing those, those hydrants and and getting installation.
How many hydrants are we down?
Seventeen total. So, um, that's what, that's what we're at now as far as in some form of failed condition. You go in, I think all the else will have access to that map. Those, those hydrants that are red, those are the ones that's got issues. You can zero in there on the details to find out what's wrong with each one. The ones that are easy fixes, you know, the guys have already tried that, well, they had fixed the, fixed the ones that they could. These seventeen are ones that since we started our main program going around, there's a guy, Mr. Don, that goes around. Every year he touches every hydrant in this town, which is not common for lots of them. Um, as you exercise these things, and our chief's department, we've implemented, but they're doing all the fire flow testing. Um, we've had a couple go down with, with, with them when they test them. Um, they'll tell you that when they're, if they're working, they won't go down when y'all go out and turn them on. The problem with a lot of these failed hydrants is being able to get them to turn off and they've got issues inside the hydrant. So, yeah, it's it's went up to seventeen. That's from several decades of not. So, yeah, it's, it's went up to seventeen. That's from several decades of not being touched, being put into, put into service over the past couple of years.
Thank you. Are you leaving?
I am leaving. Um, I spoke last week to Mr. Brown and then formally today, um, to let you know, I'm getting hurt.
Well, I hate to see you leave. You're a good employee.
So, so city manager, you'll be at some point inside of strategic plan, there'll be a, a robust, a robust impact fee.
Yeah, so here's what I think, based on what Tommy's saying. We need to find out, first of all, have we, have we closed out any DEP loan that we received? Or not loan, but the, uh, any funded projects. I know in August and February every year, the Florida DEP provides funding for you. Because you are a rural area, you, I think you are one of the very few communities in Polk County that have this special designation. It allows you to make applications to the DEP in August and February. Not only can you get favorable terms, when I say favorable, like loan forgiveness, you, you apply for the loan and then they give you a grant in return. I've seen communities like you get eighty to ninety percent loan forgiveness with low interest, zero point one five to point two percent interest. And so you meet that criteria, okay? I believe you need it. I don't, I haven't checked, but we make one phone call and let you know. So, the fire hydrant, uh, uh, this is a capital improvement program. When you do your strategic plan, one of your, one of your main things in there is developing a comprehensive capital improvement plan. And that would include the fire hydrant replacement program or AMI meter replacement, or AMR meter replacement in his case, because I think he's got AMRs, Reno reads or mechanical.
We're manual read, but whenever I told you we started installing smart meters, we're just still reading them.
Okay, so, so, well, well, listen, the, the truth is, all, all that, all of that we just said can, can be replaced.
Yes.
You could go, you, you know, I recommend that you don't do a, a one hundred percent at a time, you do phases at a time. So if you start having malfunctions with a batch, you know where they're at. But over time, move from mechanical, really to AMI, because I think you have infrastructure with electric. So you got the, the, the infrastructure to do it. And you, you already have AMRs here and your, your electric bill. So, uh, uh, I mean, it's, I hate to see Tommy leave, because what's gonna happen is the institutional knowledge that you have now, it's gonna walk out of here. It will create a, you know, a shortcoming, if you will, because I don't think he's trained his replacement. I think that he is it. You know, I think they had a number two guy, but he's out right now, man.
Uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Wooten, I'm feeling for Mr. Wooten at the, at the waste water plant, and while he's actually carrying the water at the, at the, at the water plant. Thankfully, both of us got licenses, so I'm, I'm handling the ops down there and Wiley Clark, I mean, y'all be nice to that guy. Yeah, he's raised that hard.
Yeah.
He's, he can't, he can't just pick up and go. I mean, he's, he's here, he lives here, with his cool weird place for his football team, um, he's here for long, so that's accurate.
Yeah, so all, all of that, so, you know, obviously, you know, you know, I'm preparing a plan of action on what's gonna happen, you know, before, uh, Tommy, uh, leaves here. We, we're talking about a meeting, hopefully he hasn't responded by email, that we could talk or meet on Wednesday or either Thursday. And kinda get a game plan together, where the keys at, where the cigarettes at, where all these different things. So, so we'll see if you, you guys listen. So, uh, so, so we're working on that. I'm working with Tommy, I'm putting together a plan of action, and then I'll roll it out to you, I'll make sure you guys are aware, I promise.
Thank you.
All right.
And then the meter thing, to, the, we currently don't have an SRF on, on the water side, so it's wide, it's wide open if, you know, this strategic plan. But when I say about a metering, I, I brought it to the commission before, I've even provided that ROI that I, I sent you, and I think that's one of the, um, that's what feeds not this, this, this fund, but, but the waste water also. All, all that's calculated off of that.
Yes.
And right now meters are, are, are running till fail, you know, when, when, uh, they tell us, you know, to go out there, that they're not hitting, can you go check this meter? You know, that may have either, if it's a mechanical meter, it's been in stock, that thing's been degraded for years. And then when we do replace that meter, them folks are gonna get, oh, my God, my work's done. But that's, I mean, that's, that's the nature of it.
Yeah.
I would say that, you know, investing in that, that meter program, and that's probably where that strategic plan is going.
And, and, and I need to say something, because it's very critical what Tommy just said. He said run till fail, that's an engineering term, okay? And that's when you run your systems until they fail, and then now you got this huge capital cost that you might not be able to afford, okay? So, so the other thing about the, the mechanical meters, the older they get, the older they get, it's construed in favor of the person paying the bill. That means that they're getting more water than they're paying for. So it's unfair for you to treat water and have someone pay less, but get more water. So the newer the infrastructure, the newer the meters are, the better off you are. Now, you're gonna have people complaining that, you know, you increased rates and that kinda thing. But that's okay, because you should roll out like a, a newsletter or something, or put bill inserts here saying that, hey, look, we're replacing meters. This means there might be an increase in what you, what you pay. But it won't be because you raised the rates, it'll be because you're actually tracking perfectly what they're getting, so. That's it. And if Tommy King, while he's here, can you talk about the RIF program? Yeah, the RIF program?
On, as a tank for water?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the SOFIE. Oh, you're talking about the upcoming RIF that we've been working on? Yeah, so we, uh, we're working on, we're working on another grant that's right along the lines with, uh, SOFIE. Um, and that's to fill a lot of the, the needs that are on that, um, that list, and that is water and, and waste water.
We are on that list.
Yeah, we are on that list.
Okay.
And we pretty much have secured the, the, we secured the SOFIE, we're going through the, the.
What is SOFIE?
Uh, it's standard something appropriations for Helena and some hurt names.
Okay, all right.
And, and with all these grants that you're seeing come to fruition, like, um, this doesn't happen overnight. And, and Amy is probably gonna thank you, especially on the sewer side, because, uh, in some of the turnover and stuff, you know, some of these things, like the American Legion, some of this stuff set, set in a sandbox, you know, and I didn't have eyes on, and Amy was here, she picked up, but some of this stuff was started, this one we're fixing to finish up on the waste water side, it's just, and another one, it's just. And it takes that many years for those things to come, full fruition. And with turnover here, um, you know, there's been people that, that spilled in the gap, but, um, I know you've been visiting, we haven't had a lot of eye to eye lately. But it's, uh, you, you've been a, a blessing in picking it up on the sewer side.
Good deal.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wooten, just a question. Uh, knowing that this is coming down the, um, down, down the pipeline, are there thoughts on how to deal with it regarding constituents and the phone calls and emails that will come? Is that, is that, is that through town hall form that you educate the people, or a special session? How, how does that?
Uh, a combination. I think it's all above. I think, I think in this community, and I don't, I'm not an expert, you're the experts in Fort Meade. Um, but I believe that bill inserts are a good way to start, that, you know, that's easy to do for us, that's easy to do. Um, you know, I don't know if the town has a, city has a Facebook page, but social media, definitely. If, I, I know we don't have anybody doing social media on, on the second floor, because.
So I'm not just posting something.
So, so we got some of those people. Well, we definitely. We definitely gotta do that.
Why can't this street get done?
Yeah, no, no, we definitely gotta do that, but I, I just think that the bill inserts, since we already paid and we can get that done cheaply, you know, if we start doing that, people, when they open it up, they normally, I don't, I'm electronic, I, don't send me paper, you know? And don't send me a text message, because it's just a worse way to communicate with me.
There's a phone call, we have a, a smart notice that we do not effectively use, in my opinion.
Like Code Red? Like, like it's an automated?
Send out messages.
Notification?
Yeah, we should. People who, uh, who are signed up for.
Yeah, absolutely. They'll go to their cell phone or, yeah, I think that's another excellent way, because sometimes these systems are underutilized, because people confuse them with as public safety owned, but then at the same time, we don't wanna overdo it, because sometimes people say this is not that important, that's just the city calling again, so. We can't do, we can't do it too much, man. Can't do it too much, but, um, yeah, there's ways to do it. That's, to me, start out with bill inserts, and then if there is a town hall meeting, maybe that's part of what we talk about, town hall meeting.
Okay, especially, uh, because that's been a focus for me, is to get a strategic plan so that we're all up here fighting the same battle versus fighting against each other with, versus, you know, ideological type battles, is what I mean, uh, not physical.
It, it's, it's, it's good to have, because what it does, when, when the council, when there's, when there's disagreement with the council, the staff really understands what they're supposed to be focused on.
Yes.
You've heard here, turnover. You know, I get another boss. What happened, I don't know when last thing yesterday's strategic plan, but I know that it's been helpful in cities I've worked in that had turnover, because we didn't wait for the next city manager to get in place or get installed. We knew through our internal operating procedure and what was approved by the council, where we need to focus it, because not only did it have the goal, it had the deadline and what the budget of funding was gonna, where it was coming from. So, this is what you need to really help, especially in the small town where the manager walks away, somebody comes in, staff is like, well, you know, I'll wait until the new man gets here, the lady gets here, and tell him what to do. So, you, you need that plan.
Yes. Thank you.
We got on the water, yes sir.
Yes.
Yeah, waste water?
Next chapter, we're on, on the other end of the section. All right. Uh, Brianna? Good to go?
Yes, uh, yes, so we'll go over the key items for sewer and sewer impact funds, and this will probably be the last department I'm here to go over with you, because I do need to leave about three thirty. Um, so we'll go over this department, um, together. Of course, if you have any questions, you know, that come up, um, that are unable to be answered, you know, this afternoon, uh, Jennifer will reach out to me, um, and let me know, um, and I can also try to make myself available, um, by phone, you know, as available this afternoon. But anyway, on your sewer fund, your key items in your sewer fund for revenues are your two point one percent increase, uh, by ordinance for your rates. Uh, and that's really, uh, you also have a grant coming in, uh, to this fund, and let me go up there. So your, you have a CDVG grant, uh, coming in at five point three billion, an SRF grant coming in at six point one million, and a DEP VFW grant coming in at seven hundred, six thousand, five hundred. So all of that together with your, uh, sewer of revenues for services are the material revenues coming in to this fund. For your expenditures, as we were talking, uh, with previous funds, you have a hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars in internal service charges going to the general fund. There's a ten percent increase in chlorine, as we discussed, uh, the same as the water department. There are no disaster-related expenditures budgeted in this department. There is an additional capital request, uh, for the chlorine gas alarm for the sewer department as well, for three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. There are additional capital requests for some critical items, uh, that Tommy and I were discussing today. The first one being twenty-one thousand dollars for lift station one. It's a pump conversion to a three-phase pump. Thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for the electrical to convert that pump, um, and that's expected, uh, based on some internal cost estimates from your electric director. And sixty thousand, six hundred dollars for lift station number two rehabilitation. And there's a caveat with this, uh, the original quote for that is a hundred and twelve thousand. We've reduced that budget down to sixty thousand, six hundred to reflect a phased implementation through fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. So this is flagged as a late project in your upcoming fiscal year, so this would start at the very end of, uh, twenty twenty-six and extend into twenty twenty-seven. Uh, there's a five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars as unassigned for capital equipment needs that may arise. In this fund, there are two SRF payments in debt service, um, one began in twenty twenty-five, the other one will begin in twenty twenty-six. And there's a transfer to the general fund of fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, uh, five hundred and fifty-five, excuse me. For the related sewer impact fee fund, uh, those revenues are restricted again only for the expansion of your sewer department and development. There is thirty thousand dollars, uh, in capital outlay, uh, specifically requested for permit renewal planning and collection system, which Tommy was speaking about before, with, uh, the growth in your city. Um, that portion of that project can be addressed with your sewer impact fee fund specifically, uh, for that purpose, and so those have been budgeted there.
You good, Brianna?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I just wanna say that SRF, she, she mentioned the SRF on here, it's labeled as SRF, those are the folks that are administering that, that fund. But it's, uh, it's actually the SOFIE, so that thing is a hundred percent. Not gonna be any out of pocket for the, for the, for the city on that. And it's the same with the RIF that Amy's, uh, working on, it's gonna get across the finish line. I, the reason I got y'all's, these budgets late on the sewer side is, uh, as, as I had started to scrutinize this thing, uh, for this, um, I reached out there, because some of the items that it allocated for capital, um, there's these three items here, this face-up conversion, uh, these electrical conversions. Um, this, this is for two of the projects that are underway, that, that this was not in scope originally, um, that we found it was oversight a couple of weeks ago, and that's this, uh, American Legion. Um, they, everything, to build that thing and make it happen, and then when we got out here on the ground, someone said, where's electricity? And then we realized, they dug in, it wasn't, it wasn't there, so I got the electric director. Um, we, we jumped to the, to get, get that, that number here, but that, that has to happen, for the next place to happen. And then the, uh, the same with the pump conversion. Most of your pumps, when I first started, a lot of stations, when I first started here, were the same place. We've done these three-phase conversions, this is one, we're getting a generator, getting these electrical assets from this, um, CDVG MIT grant. Um, this, this is the time to, to make that, that happen. It's gonna lower the operating costs for that station, save all electricity, and save the pump replacements, the same paper. Do not laugh. Um, and this, lift station two rehabilitation, the reason I stuck that on, that thing's in, in shape.
Where is this located?
This is in, uh, another, she's gonna work it correctly. It's the neighborhood that's, uh, over close to the river, with, uh, off of Edgewood.
Okay.
Okay, over there, there's a lift station, back there in, 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 in the woods, nobody knows.
That's right.
Okay.
You took, you took.
You, you're one of the, you're, yeah, I will say this, thank you, Mr. Brianna, I think you're one of the only one, not to take a damn, all y'all.
Nobody wants to go to a school.
Nobody wants to go to a school.
Yeah, I remember.
Sam represented all of us.
Took one for the team.
We are the convention.
Lift station four, uh, I believe, I believe, uh, we had interim, Maria was in at that time, but that station fell during catastrophic. The pipes were so rotten and everything, and a lot of transferring, and slugged, I mean, uh, sewer. So we had that, luckily we had that pump here, we put that pump in place, we found, and we could gather quotes and, and made it happen. Um, this station is off our line, um, and that's why it's critical for them to work out here. Originally, it was understood that the CDVG MIT was including these rehab on the lift station. And that, that was not the, the case, this was generators, uh, at these, at these lift stations and some of that infrastructure. But, uh, the pipes are bad there.
So are we talking, uh, the same type of mediation that we did at Cherokee Lift Station? That's a brainwash.
On that scale.
Okay, all right.
We're talking about some, we're talking about some, uh, some piping, some coating, uh, and, and valve. We've already replaced one of the pumps out there, it's already upgraded, so one, one of the pumps actually brought up this stuff.
Okay. Uh, uh, so, another question. When was the last time we visited or we evaluated where we are with our fees as it relates to like-size? Uh so another question, when was the last time we visited or we evaluated where we are with our fees as it relates to like sized cities?
As far as comparison to other cities?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
A warning to a rate study, what are you promising?
Yeah, so a sewer uh rate study was was in the works for upcoming budget. Um but we've had some some moves here, so that's been delayed. Um I've shared the uh the contacts, I think Amy knows, um and I I don't know if the new uh director knows, but Water Row Water, that's 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 the go to for a lot of the a lot of this uh stuff. They'll come and do that rate study, you don't have to hire a consultant to do this, and that's that is the plan. They have something that we've had on books for a while that coincides with their diamond map, we're gonna have to gather all the masses, it's called Red Plan. Uh one of the consultants uses that exact model and who forecast rates, you can see it before it were happened. Uh that red plan, we gotta input something out of there and that's that's a tool that we can utilize. But getting uh getting married, I'm returning here and and conducting that study is is key. Meter cell here also, that's it's all.
Well, I'd like to say something, uh Tommy, I wanna thank you uh for your hard work here and the service you've rendered to the city, you will be missed. And um you know, I know I know the cost of turnover in organization, and I know sometimes we don't realize how valuable our employees are until they eat. And so hate to say we give part even leave, but we don't give money come in. Uh one of the things that Tommy I wanna share with you told me when I in my conversation with him was that there are about four or five lift stations sitting wide. I'm sorry, six, six total.
Is that unheard of?
Yeah, cuz yeah, I I I that's very uncommon, which means that you a lot of your areas are gravity fed. That means it's cheaper for you. So we don't have a heavy lift to repair the lift stations, but I he's talking about piping and stuff, I'm like, oh man, that doesn't sound good, but but it sounds like we can really fix sewer infrastructure quicker than we can the drinking water part of it, so.
One thing that I've talked with Tommy about, and uh I've seen it done at the city of Sunrise, where they before they became what they are now, they built up their water and sewer plants to a a level in which people come to them for their type of service, so.
You know, this is this is all about the and what you're what you're what you're talking about is positioning yourself to be a service provider outside of your current water and sewer district. And this is what I used to do well, okay? So this is something that you can do here, you know, I just don't know where the next water and sewer district is. I don't know if Polk or somebody's brought their water sewer district on on the
I need to share, we've got a very large service.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
As a planner, you can kind of make this uh
I just think I I'm glad I'm glad to hear that because because I know that it's gonna come a time where if they don't put their pipes in the ground and they're trying to get into our area, we get into this huge thing about surcharge in these kinds of things. And so I haven't seen it, I I meant to look at the it's Florida statute one eighty if you wanna read it for whatever reason. And uh but it really regulates this, and I think this is an area that is part of your strategic plan. How do you grow yourself? Um if they don't have pipes in the ground, you can you can declare an area from all the way to the next one.
We're pretty much all the way down to the county lines at the south of it.
Yeah.
All the way out to the county road here to the west of it.
Is it five fifty five or thirty seven? Okay, five fifty five. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can't remember the name of the road, but it's a large area. Um but like he's saying, if you know, action's not taken, if they're not coming for coverage of water, well.
Exactly, and so
That's right.
That's that's why I've been pushing for it, so if we can capitalize off of it, that would be good for us.
With the sewers, it's pretty easy in terms of negotiating those agreements. You know, the electric is something that's kind of different.
But we gotta be more aggressive with that because we've been encroached on by Peace River, uh even Barto, uh even Duke. Uh they're providing services to the east of us. I think Peace River is down there, Peace River is coming up into our service area from the south, cuz of course there that's Hardy County. Uh and then Barto is coming in from the north.
Definitely wanna be competitive.
Correct.
And what that means is we may we may have a staff that that understand that type of stuff, but we do, our staff's more tactical, they really know what to do, how to respond and how to be proactive in terms of, you know, handling day to day operations. But right now, we need to know what the future is and how do we compete against Duke and uh
Peace River.
And all those other guys, cuz I read a June twenty twenty five report here the other day. And we are, I guess if you put the markets in, you know, first, second, third, fourth, we're like in third market. We're not, we don't charge as much for electric than they do for than Duke. Okay, so we have something to offer people. Now, right now, I think we're we're trying to have our meeting with them, but we're not gonna have to be until I think August twenty sixth. And um at that meeting, we'll talk about a number of things, including the uh PCA stuff that uh Commissioner Kutchy discussed, talked about the other day. How they reportion the bill so that people don't see the dips and downs in their bill. But I was very impressed when I saw where we where we ranked. We were we were just slightly more than Florida Power, which they're supposed to be one of the cheapest power companies in the country. And we're definitely less than, way less than uh uh Duke. Just just for June twenty twenty five, I don't know. I don't know if that's yearly, but I mean the statistics I saw, June is a high use of month, might be the same throughout the year.
One thing about so then is uh all this work that Ms. Judge had put into place and Amy continuing to just rip or button up all these man over. I mean, we're already seeing the improvements down that West River plant, it's part of our flow of the product. Um I remember our struggles during the hurricanes, I mean last the last time the term uh the term I used was that the feel it'd be the brown plus the green, we didn't want anybody but like about a foot down there. All them improvements add capacity to your plant. The plant though has it to improve, so there's a lot of stuff down there that's degraded, um and we can take that tour um at some point. Um that the that stuff will have to be fixed, a lot of it gets fixed with uh some of these grants we got coming in. Six point three that's that's coming, addressing a ton of controls and everything down there that waste our plants, but it's still a a very, very old plant.
Yeah. Yeah. So as as we talked about before, we know we're gonna have to do it, so let's go ahead and let's plan for the cattle. That was something else Judge said.
Yeah, you you know, like I said, thinking about it right now, putting it in the plan so everyone knows that you're trying to grow your utilities. You know, now, a lot of the SRF stuff, they don't pay for capacity improvements, but but a lot of times it could be designed in a way that increases capacity, but deal with the safety improvements. So it's all going back to getting the right engineer in the company to kind of help us think through how we get here.
Well, thank you Tommy for your service, uh we will hate to see you leave. You giving us what, thirty day notice?
Or three day.
Yeah.
Not a two day, it's what I've written, that couple of times. It's not, I I wanna, I really care, I don't live here, but I've thrown in a discount. It's an awesome little town, and it it can be, it has so much to come. I just want everybody here to, if y'all get along and start, like he said, get a strategic plan and everybody's heading in the same direction, you gotta talk and go far. And um you know, the key is to be a place where everybody wants to come and work, everybody wants to come and do business.
That's right.
This ground, I pulled everyone here before August seventh, I first I lost count. Somebody's gotta do this job. I I'm 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 tired and I'm leaving, but every when I tried to encourage everybody to stay, Jennifer Knowley was one of them, um somebody's gotta do this work. And and the city ain't going nowhere, it's gonna still be here.
It's gonna be here. And 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 Tommy worked on Terry, guys, I just thought you should know.
I believe it.
Thank you Tommy.
I'll be seeing you before you go.
Anybody need a refreshment of the break before we go to the next one?
He said yes. Can you have an easy day?
I I I snapped on that cookie. That seems like a water, everybody wants a water? Do we have ice, I see drinks or whatever. A Coke or Sprite?
Sorry.
I don't wanna diet Coke though.
There's candy in that too.
Uh that's not regular, that's not regular, it's got stacked right. That's whenever I'm trying to do right. Thank you, sir.
I'm so sorry.
No, I'm I'm great, I'm great.
That's it. Thank you for that.
Alright, and at this time we're gonna ask Trevor, don't that?
Doubt it. Doubt it.
Doubt it, okay.
Yeah, just like I said. Dow.
Okay, I don't wanna miss that.
So I don't think Brianna's witnessing one.
So you'll get the benefit of having the footnote version.
Yep.
Solid waste, twenty items that Brianna provided, solid waste with the contract that was received until I thirty, I think it's October twenty five. Then a hundred and sixty three, two hundred dollars for contract services. And that's just with the six percent increase. So that's it for revenue, then we have sixty thousand four hundred and forty two is budgeted for that internal service charge. And as Brianna said, we are looking into the metal and metal. Four thousand nine hundred and fifty eight dollars if this designated to the transfer to general fund, and this is aligned with the third year allocation. Four thousand is set aside for current service fund to strengthen and address the future adaptive.
So I have a question that don't necessarily apply to this, it was one that I forgot to ask, but it's pertaining to we've said in each one that we don't, we're not budgeting for emergency situations, right? So what is a good percentage for an emergency?
That's a great question because every community is different, okay? So some people look at, they got this association called the Government Finance Officer Association, okay? GFOA, Florida's got a version, it's called the Florida Government Finance Officer Association. And what they do is give advice to, you know, municipal governments all throughout the country. Some are members, I wouldn't be surprised if we're not a member, we might be a member, are we? We're a member. And so they they recommend that you have at least twenty five percent of your total revenue restricted to reserves. Some of that
Budget or our total budget?
Total budget, or it could be department, or it could be whatever, but twenty five percent. Some people say that that's too much. When I say some people, I've seen finance directors and CPAs argue about a number of things. You some people say you just need three months, some people say you need six months, some people say you need a year of operating. But it really depends on the policy that you set. Now you're gonna hear me say that because that staff really has no authority to do certain things, it takes the council to adopt policy. Now, a financial policy that I think that would make sense here would be that, but right, not for this budget. Uh but you should set a policy and say that you wanna have sufficient reserves, you know, by department or by what or overall. And so you said it, you know, so some cities are not able to do twenty five percent, some cities have more than twenty five percent. But it's really based on, but you need to have a plan on how you're gonna put money in reserves. We just are in a situation this year that is challenging. But you should you should you should think about maybe have staff bring back a policy that you can implement for the FY uh twenty five, twenty six year that provides a plan of action on how we're gonna go about it. Right now, we have a finance director, Jennifer's doing a great job, okay? Position's vacant right now. So this will be a good item to, you know, make a policy, so when the new person gets here, they say, okay, I gotta provide a plan of action, I'm gonna start looking at this. But we need to look at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, well, it's something that 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 Brianna said in one of the meetings I had with her, she said that we were that we were already authorized to increase the solid waste fee by two point one percent without going back to the city commission. Already for right, so
That's the question I had earlier about the fees.
Yeah, so you you know, bills that are gonna come out after October one will see a two point one percent increase, right? And so I think the solid waste fee is gonna go up and and she she said it was another one, two, I think it's the water sewer. Water sewer and garbage, they'll they'll be going up.
They should probably have gotten the notices.
You you don't, I I don't know.
So I don't know if anybody has reached back out, I don't, I I usually get her number, but I don't know if she's representing that mobile home park as as just a resident in the mobile home park or as the manager or the owner.
Who are you talking about?
There was a lady that came up and spoke.
Oh, I see, yeah, I remember, yeah, uh Bailey, Rachel Bailey, the chief spoke with her, I believe.
Okay.
Right, yeah, yeah, the chief spoke with her.
That was pertaining fires?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That particular uh young lady was discussing fires.
See, um I know that there the Polk County has uh informed us that they are increasing their solid waste impact fees, but that the good thing, unless you're building a house or building some property or getting a building permit, it's really not gonna affect anybody of who develops property, so. Which that's gonna be passed through, yeah, passed through.
Okay. Thank you Trevor.
Item D, uh two D, electric, Steve Doyle.
It's I've looked at it for the last thirty days and just kind of what we had been going back in, this is really, really close to what we did in the last year. Even with the down being considered a setback for the substation upgrades. Amy the grant for the substations one seventy five also, which meets exactly what the FPA had broke down to when they came, two seventy five being the final pair. Not too long, and now we got the grant. I wanna hit you guys a year or two.
There's a change that means to be um for the twenty twenty five budget truck relief payment, I believe it's on page it's something, it's six of six. It says um one man bucket truck note. Brianna put in there ninety three thousand for the budget and she put that's for the truck, the payment and the down payment. We just made the down payment into the year twenty five, so this ninety three thousand will be decreased by forty five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So the money was in the budget last year, we just didn't ever jump on it, we just used that money actually this year's budget. We're gonna throw the down payment.
Awesome.
So that, that will be the. So the keynotes for the electric fund, a hundred thousand dollars is budgeted under the state grant revenue, electric supply system for the substation upgrade. Five thousand six hundred fifty dollars is allocated to communications and internet, which includes an increase for one cell phone and one tablet. And a thousand dollar um earmark throughput. Three million eight hundred thousand is budgeted under electric pole sales purchases based on average activity. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand is allocated to maintenance purchases and that's based on average activity as well. Ten thousand is budgeted under repair and maintenance equipment, including three thousand for equipment safety testing, um that to my understanding has not been deemed budgeted for.
So we can't just take the buckets for maintenance, we have to test them manually, we'll test the power lab to make sure that. That hasn't been, we've been paying for that out of our truck maintenance.
So we added that um indoor equipment, repair maintenance. One hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred ninety dollars is budgeted under internal service charges. Um management does not plan to budget for disaster related causes for this year. Ten thousand dollars is allocated to capital improvements for installation of a chain of fence at the substation. And that's an estimate, I know you said that um.
I think that'll cover. At the substation is, is that fence?
It's a substation, but it's actually inside our fences where the um, the first bay, if you go all the way through there, the big bay on the right.
Yes.
We've got skid deer and low heading material there that we have to put it, so we could set off, we have a chain of fence around it, so nothing comes out of there, it shouldn't be coming out of there.
So where's it gonna go?
Uh well, for all that purposes, somebody says, I don't feel like going back up and grabbing the ones that were laid out for the job, we'll grab three down here.
Yeah. Is that at the beginning of the bay?
It's a nice rich shop on the right.
Okay.
First bay.
Yeah.
Two hundred and thirty thousand is budgeted on the structural improvements, which comes including two hundred thousand total with one hundred thousand dollars fitting match portion for the substation upgrade. Thirty thousand for other capital projects. Eighteen hundred is allocated to new equipment for one tablet, but that is.
Thirty thousand other. Brianna talked about this. So we, we went from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand for material. Kind of closed last hurricane. Sure is a really good this year, but the money might have been used for part of the substation instead, but I think the money's right. The prices are still going up, um so she threw the extra thirty thousand in there for the extra material in case material was ignored.
And it looks like um the eighteen hundred is allocated to equipment for one tablet that's. I'm gonna mark that. We put, we put about ninety-three thousand. Seven hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars is included in the, the transfer to the general fund based on prior year allocation. The find out, in a total of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars is allocated from the electric fund to the general fund, consisting of both internal service charges and transfer to the general fund. These allocations are intended to support the ongoing operations of the general fund. While this support remains essential, it is clear that the electric fund has prioritized routine and revenues to do same, more electric services and project and infrastructure maintenance and provision. Due to current financial constraints, the department's unable to budget a carryover to reserve in fiscal year twenty-five. And support to the general fund has been reduced in order to balance the electric fund. The electric fund will need to rebuild its reserves as its significant portion has been drawn down over the past several years. Future budget Michael should emphasize reserves restoration to ensure long-term operational. And infrastructure liability.
This is, this is a utility. This is what we were talking about earlier, about having a strategic approach to growing these utilities, okay? You know, uh Steve does a good job for us because he, he keeps me updated on everything that's been going on on a daily basis. Right now what's needed is how do we, how do we grow the utility in a way that generates revenue? That's, that's what this all comes down to. And I know that the data center may not have, be, may not be a good. One for us, maybe on the water and sewer side, but not on the water, on the electric side. Yeah.
Too much about that till we meet the report.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking about the ways to keep people out. We brought this up fifteen times, you know, after, like, how long I was there, but you had the territory agreement. For who never signed it and they just, you know, inches. So you got Peace River coming, you actually call, I have to go rule a Peace River line to work on power lines. Um and then you've got the force we've got here, so.
Now, you know, this is what, this is what one of your residents informed me the other day, I think her name is Candy, she walked out with me the other day. And I am trying my best to find the franchise agreement or the territory agreement because we need to see what's in it, if we have one, and run it to ground. And turnover. New, new deputy clerk. Trying to get information so we can get it on the agenda, takes, is taking more than a couple of days. And so this is something that we definitely have to, you know, we just have to, we have to pay attention to. Because, because to me, the electric is one of our ways. Uh uh it's not the only way, but I think it's. Not many municipalities have electric utilities, okay? And we need to look at how we position electric, water and sewer. I know gas is gone. But you know, we're doing reporting right now to the Public Service Commission on the gas utility that we no longer have. Now, whatever happened. I mean, I know that gas in the panhandle is a moneymaker. That's because it's coal up there, right? And so I don't know what it does here, but we need to make sure smartly we look at how we position these utilities. In that strategic plan. So that when I leave or Steve's not here or whatever, that people come in and the first they look at, they say, oh. I'm supposed to do this by twenty twenty-seven. Let me take my, but I'm not, they're not waiting on a city manager telling them whatever. So that's important. The reason why I'm stressing to you is because most cities, especially small ones, strategically, they put together a budget based on what their priorities are. Period. They don't even let, they don't let other stuff enter into the picture and say, this is the stuff we're gonna work on. Period. And so.
With the leases to Port Hurst, if you're not sure if we're gonna have a replacement in time, that's part of the pushing, those discussions back up. I recall Amy what did today, Sunday? Might donate to that email. We got one shot at this. We wanna get the most we can get out of this area. Decide when we want anybody to rent a town. Um I think it would be a little bit good. With the PA, we have the reward, so.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if um. Fred Hilliard, um he was the, probably the longest tenured city manager here that played a crucial role in us um. Going um, being in bed with Fong. So he may be able to shed some light on if there was an actual sign.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think, I think all of that is help.
And he said he's willing to help.
Yeah.
So.
I'm pretty busy to call, we talked before, he didn't bring it up, but I know Mike's already looking to, they already looking to the force. He may not need something, somebody can find and sign with the state and um. We know what our outline is now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it you can lose on the outside edge, something, what percentage you can get back out of that monthly rather than saying we'll take it over, just lots of stuff to talk about.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And I think I saw the, the um perimeter when J M Agnes was here.
It's there, I mean, there's one, but it's just recognized by the state.
Correct.
I would be working, at least did the same thing, that's why I said, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna get the right parties together.
Well, he, he's had expertise, but I just re, I know nothing about electric. Okay, uh okay, I stay out of electric, but here's what I do know. We might have to hire someone to help us position ourselves. Now, I know FMPA is a good one, but I think there are consortiums of maybe ten cities, like in the state. This, you might need somebody from outside the state to help you. Think about it, there are other bigger ones that, you know, consultants that work in other markets that could probably help us quickly. I mean, working with FMPA, I think is great, but just don't close it off because we're dealing with Duke Energy. We're dealing with some very ju- big giants in this area and not, take, it takes nothing away from FMPA. Definitely we're gonna use them, but. I think, I think you need to use a, a no stone uncovered approach when you, when you're dealing with this because we're talking about the city's future here. Okay? Alright.
Uh I'm just, uh, I don't understand when you said you have to cross their lines.
If I go, if I cross over the bridge.
Uh huh.
Full Branch Road.
Cause Peace.
If I turn left on Full Branch Road, that's Peace River. If I make that curve with the cattle trailer.
Yeah, still was.
You are actually, there's a line that comes from Peace River. It comes all the way down, it goes through our line to another set of poles. Now, both of our lines run down to Full Branch. And we try to feed the first three, four houses at Full Branch, they're gonna feed the next four or five, then you're running the bar for them now.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So there's nobody that's really gone back and said, hey, can you guys, do you mind just letting us have it forward here, you know? And it, it's not a good situation. If you're looking at those lines, it's really low, you go around that curve, because all these lines are stacked. You gotta have three phases, they've got two phases in the neutral.
We're talking about a data center. We, we go.
This will be Duke out here, but it would be, the way I look at it, your picture, maybe three, anywhere from three to eight hundred houses out there, if it could be houses, but you can't, right? And now do the math of three hundred dollars a month in electric bill, times that many houses, that's pretty lucrative, but it's just a sliver out through there. So it's correct and saying water and sewer is gonna probably be the most, you know, the most things they're gonna utilize from us. I wanna give up these properties and take something back either, so. It's bigger than that.
Duke's out there and it's full of town. I thought, I thought this was just.
All in this green.
Before you got the whole one.
So in the map, it's, it's unshowed in territory right now.
We didn't get that.
Well, they don't have the transmission line with sixty-nine thousand poles that they need, so it's gonna be hard to do and somehow they would still be stalled. Now, if they're gonna take off the two thirty line back here or sixty-nine line coming, we actually feed off of them. Don't worry about that too, and that's all, a lot done off that sixty-nine. Are there gonna be a lot of stuff?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So um in, in this presentation, uh. I don't think I heard what the wish list are. Did anybody present anything on this?
Cause there are.
Okay, right now you, you're gonna see heavy operations. When you hear no reserves. No reserve recommendations, that means that everybody's trying to get their operational stuff in there. I think it's gonna be a bare bones, bare bones proposal to the commission this year. Uh I know that we got some challenges with public safety, but we're gonna have to find a way to fund that, and that's gonna be our biggest challenge. And I just thought of, I'm, I'm, I, I will not be here tomorrow. I have a, an appointment, but I will appear by it. I'll be on, on here. But we need to, you're not gonna see much, but stay tuned. Um, right now, there's not much. Unless, well. I know we got some requests that's coming up. Um, I guess three organizations are asking for money, four organizations are asking for money. So we need to really talk through, do you fund them at the same tune you funded them last year or previous years, or are these new requests? I don't know, but I'm sure Jennifer's gonna come up and take us through item number three.
Yeah.
So item three is, uh this is supposed to be. City commission to deal with outside agency requests, we have the help of Courtney Chambers and Courtney Main Street. I do know there was a um, a request to add an outside agency that request was moved to Winston, David, twenty. So that it could be um posted, corrected, appropriated. So. This is my first year doing this, um so bear with me, um I, I guess we're just gonna discuss if we are going to keep it the same, change it, anything to be. Added to their budget. I do know that um I spoke to you about um. Main Street and wanting to add more to the building repairs and stuff for. The term act and eligibility.
No, that wasn't Main Street.
It was Chambers.
No, no, no.
Museum.
Museum.
Oh, please forgive me.
So the museum, this, this is the museum.
I see the museum.
It's on Winston, I'm sorry, it's on Winston.
Okay.
That is, everything on, it was moving, so sorry. So the help of Courtney, Courtney Chambers and the Main Street, um if we're going to keep it the same amount, change it.
You know, um, I, I'm of the opinion that. We, we, I, I, I. I don't mind giving assistance um to, to the organizations. But I think we have to take care of home first. That's just my opinion. Uh and, and, and I know it may not make much of a difference, but anything that we can do to offset some costs to aid our public safety, which I think. Um, is paramount. I, I, I think we should do it, um. You know, I, I just think that in my, in my opinion, I'm okay with lowering the amounts that we give to, and I still don't understand why. Okay, fifteen, twelve, five, um. Lu- lowering the amount that we give to Chamber Health and Main Street, um lowering that amount to ten thousand. Each, each organization. And.
Annual contribution.
Yes, uh, annual contribution. I know last year we, we increased help of Courtney. That's why they have a different now.
I'm trying to see what they're saying.
Do I stand on here?
Yeah.
They just, they just come to the council meeting and say.
So.
That'd be a total of.
But they don't ask for much, like, I mean.
That'd be a savings of ten thousand dollars.
Oh, you, you were, you were doing the numbers, I wouldn't. So there are two things that I, I would love to have, because you know, the conversation that you're having is very important, it's connected to questions that I would ask.
Yeah.
Um I, I've had concern. Three years since moving back home about how the city assists organizations and what the organizations provide to the city in their task. The work that is being done, how it benefits the community, um I, I, you know, I think most of us in some way are tied to some type of nonprofit in the way that we serve and. Um, one of the things that's been a little bit challenging for me is to understand how the city grants support to any organization without. A, a, a very clear presentation of this is our programming, this is who it serves, this is where your dollars are going, this is how it benefits the community. But in a very real way, not, not in a ethereal, um, and, and so the questions that you were asking about, so tell me about.
Yeah, so if you want me to repeat, okay, so what was going on, we were having, I call it chatting, it doesn't matter, but. Because it's us, you know, it's not the commission. And uh what we were talking about was external agency funding as it relates to this, that's, doesn't have a name on it. Like I, you know, I want to know what, how do we spend, what she said, oh, you know, like, uh, uh, you know, à la carte, someone will come and make a request at the podium. And right now it's up to five thousand dollars what you guys would dole out to them. But these other agencies, external agency funding is different. Because these are people that, that provide, uh, they provide capacity for you. They do things that we don't do here at the city. And so, don't make a report. For that money. For that money. They come in, they come in and say, hey, look, I'm with the Chamber, and here's what we do for you guys, and, you know, every year you evaluate them. It's just like you evaluate your city manager, okay? Or your city attorney, okay? And so, so that's a, that's a policy decision that is, you can consider or not consider. Your practice has been what you've been doing. But, you know, we're, look what we're, look what's going on right now. I have to say, I did not expect the chief to come in here and say what he said, but, cause I thought that it was balanced, okay? And just knowing that it's not balanced, it forces us to look at everything. And so, you know, I don't live here, but I do respect these organizations, and I, and I would say you do what you think is, is fair. But at the same time, maybe consider a report card and evaluation every year, not, not a real one, just have them do some metrics, you know? We fed, you know, five hundred people for two thousand dollars. We did this many food drives coordinating with whoever provides all these different things. Make them show what they do for the money. You know, it's all, it's not for profit, so it's, you know, all you care about is them, you know, uh, providing services to your residents. And I'm not saying, don't do any of this, cause I think they do provide a unique service for you, but it's up to you to set policy. And this is the opportunity to do it. You say, hey, I'll make a motion that we set a policy on capping, uh, external agency funding to, uh, you know, ten thousand, five thousand, whatever you wanna do. Or, or you say, hey, if we take a eleven percent head, head haircut here at City Hall, then everybody's gonna take eleven percent, or whatever that difference is. So this is something that you could set a policy. So just keep in mind, you can do anything and everything, just set a policy and vote on it, but that's up to you guys, so. But that's what the conversation I was having with, because you got this five thousand dollars that no one seems to know who's getting it.
Yeah, we know that we don't know that. That means it's poor documentation.
No, 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 no.
Um, the aid of private organizations for the five thousand that was scheduled for this for year twenty-five is, um, for donation.
Softball, football.
Yeah, school, yeah, anybody.
Oh, you mean, you can't, you don't foresee who's gonna come? Oh, okay, because we are documenting who we actually give, okay.
We know, we give in money to, we just can't, you know, figure out who's gonna come and act.
Yes.
There's another requirement I've seen these where you might ask the organization to, to provide a match for the same amount that you're still doing, provided, they provide a match, it gives them an incentive to work.
Gotcha. And, and that's, and that's, and that's, that's true.
Mm-hmm.
True. But you got some of these, ones that can't afford that match.
Correct.
Okay, cause it's not for profit. That's why they have to demonstrate and prove to you how they spend the money. And, uh, I, you know, like the Bakers, like it was a girls' club. Bakers.
Gotcha.
They did do matches.
So, so for the record, that's what they have always done. And when I mentioned have them come in and present, no one wanted to go that route. But that's, that's the purpose of that, is to go. Yeah, we said, we opted not to have the, the vendors come in.
I remember that, because I've always requested it.
Well, well, this is it, so they present a monthly, they present a monthly. There should not be any payments to these organizations without them first presenting what those funds went for. So there should be an accounting coming in for that, and then they reimburse up to whatever that monthly amount is.
We do the payment quarterly, and they are required to provide very detailed, um, invoices and backup as well. We want to see, whether you're checking, we wanna see, um, checks, if they've written a check for money, we wanna copy the check and stuff, that such. So, um, they do provide that, and they are paid out formally.
Gotcha.
And the only organi- organizations that I have seen come in and present, say their annual, uh, budget, a justification for requesting the funds is the help of Port Me. She did that this year, and she stated that the funds that, the funds that we, she receives from the city, it helps with the operating expenses. That's specifically what she said. Now, with, uh, the Chamber, basically, they were asking for funds, you know, from when Ms. Whiten was there, she's no longer there. That's the last time I recall anyone coming in, was Ms. Whiten, um, requesting the funds.
This practice stopped under Jane Back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, she, she, that was the last, she, she came in and said, well, the Chamber. Well, it does kinda help us with some of our operating expenses. Because I, I, I was, I wasn't satisfied with the services that were being provided and what they were doing.
Were they operating as, were they operating as, as a C-six or a C-three? Do you know?
And see, that's the, I, I didn't have the answer to that.
The money, the money that you guys give away should be to a charitable organization.
Correct.
Now, the Chamber, they're not a C-three traditionally, but they, they, they might have a R that does that and that qualifies. But I don't know that, but, but definitely, but definitely.
That's why I was asking.
The, you know, you need to verify that, that they are certified five oh one C-three, that they are true, a nonprofit, that way, you know.
I do know Main Street and.
You have another way of making sure that they are carrying out the intent purpose of their organization.
Yeah.
And, and help of Port Me does a, a great, yeah, they do that in addition to other things as well that help the residents in our city, and they are, I think they are, uh, 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 um, essential part.
Maybe they should do their presentations around budget though. So every year before, maybe, you know, after y'all set the tenant bill rate, tenant budget, I guess was in August before I got here. Between that time, like, August fifteenth through September first, have them come in, provide a report. I know they may not be able to give you metrics and all that, but at least you can ask questions and, and then say, okay, we believe.
Right, yeah.
And then.
I don't help Port Me, we can.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, it, it, it.
Well, and the, and the reason, and I know it's tough, I'm, I'm gonna just go ahead and say, i- it's a tough call because I, I can, I can speak to help of Port Me, that's the only organization I can speak to.
They're doing more than just speaking, right?
They're doing what they are there to do. I'm gonna put it that way. Um, and they do provide the metrics.
Those are charitable, religious, educational, scientific, literary, and just sports competitions. Then I would say that, that it's definitely a public purpose, and if it doesn't line up with that, then they need to come here and explain why they need to.
I agree. I, I agree.
And, and, and that's, that's my, my ask, um, I, Mayor, I must have missed, you know, your request. Uh, but that should be happening, I, I would also say, I, I know we're, we're, we're tight on dollars. Um, in, in any time, a student organization comes before us, um, it, and we have exhausted our funds. Um, it's, you know, not only sad to me, but we do what we do, okay? And coming out of our pocket to, 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 to help and support them. If there is a way to look at also offering them additional support as numbers are moved around, I'd like for us to ent- entertain that. And I don't know what that looks, if money is decreased in one space and then is made available for more student organizations or service organizations. Excuse me, whatever that looks like, um, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not certain, um, what the number would be like. Uh, but I do know, and I feel like what we, precedent and policy should be put in place for organizations other than nonprofit, that there needs to be a window when they can apply for assistance and a cap. You know, um, because we're limited in what we can give. And so in case like this year, I, I'm, I'm prejudiced to say, I would want to, right now, at this stage, looking at what we've just looked at just today, we have a couple, a couple more days to go. That I'm looking at maybe preserving or cutting or eliminating some of those funds to some of those other organizations so that we can try to balance our public safety. Um, it's not on, it may not even seem like the right thing to do at the right time, but everybody, I think, in the city, residents, businesses would agree that if that decision, if, if this is the hard decision that we have to make, hopefully that they would be okay with us making that hard decision to say, we'll detract funds from this in order to support public safety. Cause I, I'm just looking down the road, I, I don't know where we're gonna squeeze the money from.
I thought we put a cap on last year, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Pretty good. That's coming out of the legislative budget for these one asks at the podium. What we're referring to are the three.
I know, I know, I know what she's talking about.
We did, so, so you're right, we did limit it to two fifty. Uh, we don't know if we've exhausted the five thousand, we haven't.
Yes, we have.
In this, we admit this, that's what we, right? So one, one conversation was that we exhausted.
Yeah.
We spent more.
It must be gonna come pick it up.
Activity through nine thirty of twenty-five, um, to aid the private organizations, that is activity thus far, and that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Where did we get the money from?
Wait, wait, like, what, what?
That's what I'm trying to, we were told that we expended all the funds.
And that was the reason why I was saying to give more money to the schools.
That was spent was for, um, a donation to the fourth grade children.
Exactly.
Right.
That's all I'm thinking, yeah.
And so there's like, there's like, four thousand seven hundred and.
Something left, right?
So, um, five thousand and five hundred and fifty dollars, so, it was what is projected. Respectfully, if you guys ever have any questions, you can always email us, and we can send you guys, like, documentation of what was actually there.
So maybe people didn't come get the money, because there were several people who came up and asked, and we said, yes. There was the young lady who did the horses, there was a, I can probably go down the line, name them all.
Well, why didn't get the money?
I don't know, but she's saying only two hundred and fifty dollars was given out.
There were two schools.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, we thought it was all gone.
And I would say, with that particular item, uh, the lady who requested it gave me a call, hey, I haven't received that check yet.
Yeah.
And then I made a phone call, hey, and then that's how they got that check. Correct. So, 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 so when, when decisions are made from the dais, you, you did too?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't know a thing, we're going on what's presented to us.
Well, what should happen though, and what should happen is, if it comes from here, we're supposed to carry it out. And I don't know what happened, okay?
Yeah.
And I'm not making excuses.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
And we're not either, we just assumed we had the money.
We need to, we need to, we need to make sure we follow through.
Or we had max money.
And do what's necessary, okay?
Now, along those lines, uh, because it should come up before us, but it may or may not, is this forgiving of abhorrent taxes to the medical center? So that they can give a scholarship. So, that's another thing that, that's, let's address all of that.
I thought this was this.
Yeah.
Clinic.
A tax rebate, a property tax rebate?
Yes.
Of how much?
The, the abhorrent taxes?
Is there a policy for that that was established by the council? See, there's, there's, there's a.
We, we're gonna say that.
It's okay, it's okay to do tax rebates, okay? They are done for a number of reasons, mainly economic development, incent- incentives, those kinds of things. But their time sense, their time limit, they don't, they don't occur forever, you know? They actually go down over time. There's all kinds of ways to split this pie. If you wanna do it, great, you can continue to do it, but make sure you contact Dr. Kielis, let me tell you that. There's other things going on right now with tax reform nationally, not just nationally, but in the state, about taxes and tax equity, okay? It is not fair for you to give a property owner a tax rebate if you don't give it to everyone. So the reason why I'm talking about this, because there are some cities right now that are dealing with this right now, but they have policies. You gotta have a policy, so if that's been the practice, it needs to cease and desist. Someone needs to call Dr. Q and let him know that next year we won't be doing this unless the council approves it. Can't be forever.
It's the building that he's in, it's the board or whatever they, the committee that.
Requested.
That does it.
Okay, well, just remember, other people, if they hear about this.
Correct.
It creates a problem.
It's a problem.
Okay, they've been doing that since he's been here, haven't they?
Uh, that was a, that was a initiative to get medical services back in the city of Port Me. Once they met that, we should have discontinued.
That's great, and that's what you do it for.
It became a scholarship for people in medical services, and then some of the recipients that get it, they say on their applications that they're going into a medical practice, but then they don't do that. So I, I made the comment, well, if we're gonna give a scholarship, it needs to be a municipality scholarship, not a medical scholarship. Uh, so.
Dr. Kielis is not the property owner, he's just the occupant.
Occupant of the building. So, it's a, it's a, it's a, I don't know whether to call them an organization, but I know it's a board. They have a meeting like once a year, and that's their annual ask. And so in my freshman year as a commissioner, I opposed it, of course, but, uh, you know, they chose to continue to, to do that.
I think it's, I think.
All the way up until last year.
I think it's a policy, I think you, you don't just, you don't, you don't just cut on this year, but unless you wanna cut this year. But, you know, but you definitely let them know that, you know, you're gonna, you know, cause you don't get it forever, you know?
Right, yeah, and that's where I thought this was, the aid to private organizations, I thought that's where that was coming from, taxes.
I think that's a total amount that we give.
Okay.
So, so, because we have additional presentations on Wednesday. So we'll, we'll continue, the conversation will continue around this, I, um.
And I would get, try to get more information with the doctor, on the.
For clarity, are we asking representatives from these organizations that we have supporting to come before us this week?
Yeah, I made an, I made a note here, I don't know about this week.
Okay.
Okay, cause it, you know, we, we, we just give them, you know, we can, uh, schedule. Uh, but, but definitely before we adopt a budget.
Right.
Because even if we adopt a budget, and the council says, none of this, it, it, it doesn't matter, we just make adjustments on that. It's not blocking, so, so, um, we will, um, call the organizations and see if we can get them scheduled all on the same day, maybe on a Tuesday, at the regular council meeting, unless we have a special meeting between now and after September ninth. Then we'll have them come to a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, give an update.
We, we think we're having another one?
I think we might.
We got the one on the twentieth. We got the one on the twentieth, Wednesday.
That's, that's the budget workshop, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about September. I'm talking, if we have to have a special meeting after September ninth.
Oh, uh, uh, September.
Run right and meet them wrong, that's not good enough, so. So we'll have a meeting, our special meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, after our, our budget workshop. If they can come on Wednesday, great, that, we can just have them come in and, but it's voluntary, don't give them two days notice, cause that's not good enough.
I mean, we can wait like, like you suggested.
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Liz. Yeah, that'd be great. Russell.
He did speak with Nicole, um, regarding, um, a couple of situations, so he is going to ask as well for, you know, more help. For just, and that's why I.
More than the twelve five, that's more than, what's, more than the.
Yeah, you said it right, twelve five.
Okay.
More, more.
There's a yearly, um, from my understanding of the situation, there's a yearly fee, um, that they're saying is for test control, um, and that they're asking for money. I guess there's a building. Um, and that they are asking for money, I guess there's a building in the area about the time that pest control done, come I think, there's, uh, building that city owned, so they're asking more money each year to cover it.
Right.
The, the.
The chamber's in owned by the bank, I think.
No, it's not that, I'll say the location. The location is from where Southern Posh is.
Yeah, yeah.
Up to the accountant firm next to the property that Cornerstone owns. That, that group of buildings received tenting under a grant that both Main Street and Chamber received. And so it appears that this is a, this was a multi-year agreement. And individuals who benefited from that side, some have declined to pay. What now is the, the multi-year part. They received the initial tenting for free and then now they don't wanna pay to maintain. One of those parcels belonged to the city of Portland.
And they're also asking the city pay the extra parcels that are not in agreement today.
So, 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 you know, it's, it's, it's important, we should have this, uh, we should, we, we should have this, um, um, presented in some form.
He's gonna, she's, he's gonna be here.
And just to give you guys an FYI, that they are going to be asking for more than what their typical yearly amount is.
And, and, and the reason why I ask, when you talk to him, is make sure the information that is presented is factual. Mr. Ford is here, so he can speak for it, but I'm almost certain that there's been no correspondence regarding for that side of the street where properties are owned, that there's been a request of. Correct. So I just wanna make sure that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, no, no type of correspondence, uh, there.
Okay.
Okay, number four, uh, Mayor and Council, uh.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I sent you guys some, uh, thank you, Jennifer, very much, and Olivia, and everybody that's here.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you guys very much. Um, I sent you an email earlier today trying to give you an update on what's going on. Uh, we're gonna continue to do that, we're gonna try to be more timelier. You know, I like to do them once a week, not a, a dissertation, but like three to five bullets, no more than five, of what I think is, are the biggest things. I will call you when there's something hot and heavy, so you guys are not caught off guard. And I apologize if I didn't communicate well enough with you guys, but I'm good at communicating, so give me a chance, alright? Alright, alright, so, uh, other than that, we don't have anything else. Um, I'll be appearing by Zoom tomorrow, uh, but I'll be here, um, Wednesday. That's all I have, unless you guys have something, take questions.
Uh, I don't, um.
Oh, so here's one last thing. I'd like to, we'll get what we just discussed here. Uh, we might be able to get the AI printer. And, and that way we can get our X night together, we'll email you that document so you can look and see what we discussed here today. And it's on there, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, this is the way, what helped, will help me.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I, I don't want you to go out of the way, but color coding helps. And then we could, if we could present what was initial and what the changes were, that helps me.
Okay.
If that makes sense what I'm asking.
Uh, 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 we're talking about it right now, so to meet these expectations right now. Okay, so Jennifer, did you hear the mayor talking about?
I do, I think we're making one.
Okay, alright, okay, so, so when you say color code, you know.
I, I, I'm saying, I am trying to get you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. It's only five. Everybody else can get it, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it helps me to go down and track better.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we know what the initial item was and then what the changes. When we made some suggestions and so on and so forth, or whatever your suggestions are gonna be.
Okay.
But it'll help you to understand what the final.
No, I understand.
Oh, you mean in the final report?
Yes.
See, I, 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 I don't like this budget process, but, um, uh, cause I think, I think, I think it's too much detail for me. I really believe that, because I, I. I, I, no, no, this is, no, no, all, all of this, all of this is part of the budget. It's the appendix, so you wanna see the detail and how much somebody made and that type of thing, but what we talked about today was, you know, is what you need to know about. And then when you say, well, how much is that budget, you know, how many people working over here? We know what this, the things that you really wanna know, like how much people make. You know, I think that's a biggie, right? You know, I think a lot of folks in cities, they like to see our name, or not name, but title and how much they make in the back of the book, so they can go and look at the personal inventory. They know exactly how many positions are budgeted, so they'll have, so we have sixty-two positions. But like, four of them are point five. But, so, you know, these are the big things. You know, how much we spend in personnel costs, you know, versus operations maintenance? How much is our capital improvement program, what's in it? You know, broken down by department. These are things that I think we need to improve upon in the budget process. But for now, what I'm gonna do, we're gonna work with finding it to see if we can get close to what you're trying to do, Mayor. And I might call you with follow-up. Anybody else got something? You know, cause I, I, I can look at his face and tell, he, he like, I might have something later.
No, no, I tell you now, I, I don't have anything, and I might have something, but I don't have anything now. Uh, I, I am somewhat agree with you. Uh, I don't know that it serves us in the way that we think that it does, line item by line item. I understand that it's been a practice here in some way, uh, I think, I, I'd say ceremonial.
Yeah.
Uh, um, but this is the way that we do it.
Yeah. And, 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 and so, here's kinda what I was thinking. I was thinking like, you know, we, the departments that we went over, and then we kinda outlined what Brianna said what the changes were.
Yeah.
Summary on the right-hand side and it kinda tracks what the changes were. And, and then maybe water insurance was blue, you know, and then like you come down and it's like an Excel.
If you're consulting Brianna, the way she did her budget when she did is exactly what I wanna see.
Okay.
She knows exactly.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I like the way she presented it.
Okay.
How she presented it is really all I need to see.
Okay.
Uh, that's for me.
Okay.
And the keynotes that her and I discussed, the keynotes are just, were the major changes. Everything else is predicted to, if you can see it, we discussed it.
Okay.
That's it, that works for me.
Vice Mayor, you got, you got any additions or subtractions or?
No, I'm just, uh, I, I'm like the rest of us here. Uh, anything we can, I know that the chief there, he's just, I mean, that's very important. We had a house fire now, I understand, that this is not even a week ago. And y'all responded real good.
Electric fire.
Uh, the house fire was passed Saturday, um.
Okay.
It's under investigation.
Okay.
So, you are.
Uh, and phone calls I get, remember, but I'm sure y'all give them to, is our budget's too high, our budget's too high. And I, I just hope we can get that nine point six, nine point seven down to what it was, if we possibly can.
Oh, we definitely don't want it to go up.
Yeah.
And, uh, we should work on that. Um, I, I can't, I can't tell you, I can't, I can't say yes, cause we don't know yet.
Well, I understand that, you asked me a question.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's why, I'm sure that's everybody concerned here.
Okay.
Is there anything that you guys would like to see tomorrow and Wednesday that was not done today?
No, I, I don't have anything.
If, if something comes up, it, it, you know, you wake up at three o'clock in the morning, just send an email to me.
Yeah, I won't, I won't. I won't wake up. I won't wake up. Not at three in the morning, but I hope I wake up. But I do hope I wake up.
Something comes up, just email.
Mayor, I also, as far as, uh, comments, um, I, I will not be able to attend tomorrow because I have to work, opening commission, the show will give me the lottery company so I can retire, so.
I get them, I'll split it.
Thank you.
We're already here first.
Because of workout conditions, I won't be, but I will be if I can be team, uh, to be a team.
Now, as long as three P, listen, as long as.
I'll be here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know where Jim at tonight. Where Jim at?
Uh, Ms. Lawrence.
Yes.
I've got some information from the conference.
Okay.
That I think would be of interest to our workforce. Um, and it's, and it's free to us and one of them actually paid us to do it.
We like free.
Yeah, this is the flyer.
After these numbers, we definitely look at us as free.
Health, um, supplement. And this is a, uh, education opportunity. This is not free.
We don't, we don't, we don't have workforce investment. The Workforce Investment Act here in Pope County.
I'm not sure about that.
Because, because, you know, we can get free labor, you know, through, through Pope Works.
Well.
Career force.
Whoever matches workforce, whoever matches workforce, the Workforce Investment Act.
Career Source.
Career Source.
I went way back with Pope Works.
Yeah, they, they were here this summer.
But those are like the high school kids, right?
Right. Yeah.
I'm talking, I'm talking now.
Yeah.
The only person I know of that, and we did it at Pope County Sheriff's Office, uh, were, uh, AARP people.
No, reemployment assistance, the state.
Yeah.
Requires that you work so many hours.
Right.
And they do that in Career Source Call.
Okay.
Stacy Dominic Campbell.
Yeah.
Adult workers.
Yeah, the adult worker, okay, got you.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we.
Stacy Campbell Dominic.
But AARP, yes, I, I have to be committed to giving to.
They, they were good workers, they were reliable, we'll put it that way. They were reliable.
But they're actually requiring for the residents of.
Right.
Need on, on, reemployment, they call it reemployment.
Right.
To do those hours through Career Source Call.
WIO, W I O A A.
Well, I think that's a weird, uh, look at.
Yeah, they have WIO, that's the, W I O, yes. Yeah.
Work Informed Opportunity Act.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know, Zach, I can talk.
Mr. Warren, they're worth a little watch, is, is he sick or?
You know, I, I hate to say it, I didn't check my test messages or something like that, cause, but he's good at notifying us. I, I've asked Cody.
I haven't heard from him, no.
Um, I hope everything's okay.
I was telling Police Little Cuts, he takes care of his father.
Right.
Yeah, he's ninety-eight years old, I was just concerned about that.
Yeah.
He had mentioned last week something about a doctor's appointment, but he didn't give me a specific, so I don't know if that was today or not.
He had mentioned to me that, yes, you know what, he didn't say he's gonna miss this week, but he did say, because his dad's a veteran, they, I go to the D hospital a lot, and so he's got to, you can't miss those appointments.
Right.
You miss them, you don't get one for like another year, a year later. So, uh, so it could be that, but I.
Okay, so if our hearts and minds are clean, we can adjourn.
So move.
Second. All the favor.
Ah.
See you guys tomorrow.
Alright, I recognize you. I haven't made you sign in twice. Sometimes I make me sign in twice. I've written it in my mind, so maybe you.